Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you all to the Unified Government Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting. My name is Jeff Carson. I will be serving as chairman. That's a nice meeting. We also have on hand Commissioner Jim Ernst serving as vice chair. Got a couple of introductions that I'm going to make before we get started. We have Janet Parker, who is the executive assistant to the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning. You'll be hearing from her a lot. She'll provide the instructions on how tonight's meeting is going to run. Also have on hand Director of Land Use and Urban Planning Gunnar Hand. And we also have legal counsel for the Unified Government, Daniel Kinn. We also have the following commissioners present this evening. Commissioner James Ernst, as I mentioned before, Commissioner Suzanne Pauli, Commissioner Brandy Armstrong, Commissioner James Connolly, Commissioner Karen Jones, Commissioner Mark Mueller, and our new commissioner, Dr. Evelyn Hill. Want to welcome you all tonight. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Parker, who will read the opening statement on how we're going to run tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to welcome those participating by telephone or Zoom to the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are participating remotely by Zoom, and Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Board members use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak, and after Chairman Carson recognizes you, please unmute your microphone and state your name when you begin to speak. For those attending the meeting this evening, please use the raise your hand feature if you want to speak on an application. After the chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you are having issues getting in the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@yco-kck.org and let Secretary Parker know. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. The applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case, which includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the board will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be recognized to make their statements and ask questions, with each member of the public being given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-thirds majority vote of the board. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will then be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the board if a question is directed to them. The staff will make their recommendation, and the board will discuss the application and make their decision with a brief statement of the reason for the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motions to approve shall include the staff stipulations unless otherwise stated in the motion. Mr. Chairman, our first application tonight is BOZA 2021-011, Joe Morton, for property at 4621 Dover Street. At this time, does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
No. Mr. Chairman, I would like to note for the record that this application was held over from the May 10, 2021 meeting for 60 days and was heard last month on July 12 and was continued for an additional 30 days for the applicant to work with staff regarding the square footage of the proposed building.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. I've got you queued up to speak. So if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your name and address, please, for the record, and tell us about your project.
My name is Joe Morton, and I'm hoping to get this passed. Well, I'm not sure what I was supposed to say here.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us about what it is that you're wanting to do? Why are you here before us tonight?
I'm hoping to build an outbuilding so I can have somewhere to do my hobbies in. And we had issues with the size the first time around, so I've made it down towards 1,800 square foot, and I have a whole empty lot to put it on, so I hopefully it'll be suitable, because I would think it would be just fine where it's at. It's just a matter of following the directions, getting everything approved.
Okay, and you've been working with the staff on getting this taken care of?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay, any questions for the applicant on the commissioners? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so we'll go ahead and open up the public portion of the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? And I see Mr. Jim Farri, so I'm going to go ahead. I'm sorry, let's see. Okay, Mr. Farri, I've got you queued up to speak, so if you go ahead and unmute yourself, please, and provide your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please give us your name and address, please.
Jim, 4624.
Go ahead, can you repeat that for me, sir? You're cutting out.
4624 Dover Street.
Dover Street, okay, go ahead.
From what I heard early in one of the other meetings, apparently there was a a survey, or Mr. Morton asked questions of the neighbors, and I had heard that he found no objections, so I decided to do a cross-check of that, and I sent out a questionnaire to neighbors in the vicinity that fell in the 200 or 250 feet range, and I did not get one response that was in favor of a large building. However, I did get almost every neighbor was supportive of a smaller, like a three-car garage building. So they were very much opposed to an industrial-type building, but yet supported our neighbor on a smaller footprint. So that was the information that I wanted to add to the to the meeting this evening.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand, and I'll call it. Okay, I've got Johna Kessler. Please go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your name and address.
Johna Kessler, I love it, 4622 Berry Road. First, I'd like to know, in prior meetings, you've requested a complete diagram and format of the building, but we're not saying anything like that tonight. And also, if you approve the building, will the one that's currently there have to be torn down? And will there be a separate entrance built, like a driveway into it, instead of how he is currently driving, parking back there by the current building on grass and driving across the ditch, digging up the mud and everything when it's wet? There is no gravel or anything, no call, he just drives through the culvert now to get in and out.
Okay, we'll get you some answers to that. Anything else you'd like us to follow up on?
My husband's also here.
Hello, my name's Gary Kessler.
I'm assuming you have the same address, sir?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
We're okay with a thousand-square-foot building, but the one that's there currently has to be torn down, which it's a 400-square-foot building now, so I don't know where he's going to gain too much, but we don't want any industrial-type building in this neighborhood. This is all residential. He would have, there's no building in this area, garage or shop, or whatever you want to call it, that's over 850 square foot now. Why would we allow such a building in this residential area?
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Anything else?
Nothing here.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? I've got Carl and Davina Sanders. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name's Carl Sanders. We live at 4619 Dover Street. We are, excuse me, sorry, I'm a little horse-throated.
That's right.
We are in favor of him building a building 1,000 square feet. Like I've said before, I'm not against anyone trying to improve their quality of life or or the property in general. Question I have is, like you've already heard, I'm not going to rehash that. The question I have for probably Gunner is, what is the maximum size of driveway entrance per property? Is that considered two properties, or is that considered a one property? Is there a 24 square, or excuse me, 24 feet maximum driveway entrance to a property? Or what is the city's codes on that? Meaning, is he going to have two driveways at 12 feet each, or can he have two driveways at 24-foot wide each? Also, I want to add to the point that nobody has brought up. There is actually two outbuildings on that property. The one, the 400-square-foot building, as Gary had mentioned, and there is another shed directly behind the house. And the way I've read the information, a part of this process is that all outbuildings will have to be removed before another building is to be constructed. And we also, as far as the neighborhood, we believe, I'm not going to speak for anybody else that's on here, but we're not in favor of the size of the building, nor is anyone in favor of a metal building as proposed. We see this little drawing, not drawing, but photos of what might be built here. We don't see anything that what is being planned to be built here. So therefore, we're totally against an 1,800-square-foot building at this time.
And what about the revised, what about a possibility of a 1,000-square-foot building?
1,000-square-foot building, I'd be in favor of, but again, you would have to be limited to what kind of frontal property, street-wide access to the property as far as driveway is a 12-foot wide per driveway location, because the driveways will be separated. Or what is the maximum size of driveway access to the street that's allowed by city code? We have to maintain that. Not in favor of a metal, a metal building as
My question was just about the size. I think we might have a question for you. Commissioner Connolly, do you have a question for Mr. Sanders?
Yes, I'm a little confused, because originally I wrote down you're in favor of. So then you said you was against it. So which one is it? Are you in favor of it, or are you against it?
I'm in favor of him building a 1,000-square-foot building, but I'm not in favor of him building an 1,800-square-foot building.
Well, he's getting a variance for it to be larger than 1,000, so you're against it? Okay, thank you.
I'm against this variance, yes, sir. All right. My wife, my wife would like to speak.
Okay, Mrs. Sanders?
Hi, my name is Davina Sanders, and I'm actually talking for my mother, who lives on the other side of this lot, but he is wanting to build on, which is 4625 Dover. We feel that this type of building would depreciate her property, would limit to any kind of view that she would get. Her problem is, is also with the two storage buildings that are out there right now. One was built on the lot without a permit, and it sits opposite of the street. It goes opposite direction. The other issues that we have is, like Ms. Kessler said, he just pulls in through the mud, the goalie, and puts mud all in the streets. He does not mow the lot half the time. When he does, it's every two to three weeks and blows the grass all over the street everywhere. It's just, if he did something within code that's 1,000 or below for the neighborhood, her fear is also, is that if you get anything bigger than that, I mean, that would get limit, and he also works on diesels for the bus barn, I guess, bus ATA, where he says that he also is going to take his oil from. Our problem is, is thinking that on this dead-end street, which is, comes down to a wooded area, that it will turn into more traffic than we are having right now.
Okay, all right, we'll try to get you some answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Last call, please raise your hand. They're seeing none. We'll close the public portion of the meeting. We're going to go back to you, Mr. Morton, and try to get a few answers. So could you address a couple of the concerns of your neighbors? First of all, I guess it would be about the additional buildings that you already have there. What is your plans for the two additional buildings that you currently have on your property?
I'm sorry, you broke up. What did you say?
Okay, what is your plans for the two additional buildings that you already have on your property?
The 400-square-foot building I'm taking down, that's where my new building is going, in that area. The other one is a little late, by 10 shed that was here when I moved in. I didn't realize that was an issue, just somewhere to hold my riding lawnmower. And it is two separate lots. I don't know that really makes a difference, but it's just a little bitty shed.
The other one When you say little bitty, why don't you give us some dimensions or something?
Eight by 10.
Eight by 10, okay, so 80 square feet?
Yes.
Okay, what about the driveway access? You're driving through the culvert to get, to get access to these buildings? Do you have a driveway?
At the moment, yes, I will be putting a driveway soon as I get the okay of where I can put the building and where it's going. Then I will have that graded out and concrete it in.
Okay, and I guess the other question would be the material. Can you, you want to go through the material that you're planning on building this new building out of?
Well, I was hoping to do a metal building, but I have to do horizontal siding. So it will look very similar to my house, because my house has metal siding on it as well. It's just lap siding.
I'm sorry, can you go ahead and further elaborate? So you're wanting to do a metal building with horizontal siding?
Yes.
So are you going to take the, I mean, the traditional vertical siding and just have it built horizontally? Is that, is that the plan? Or is it going to be matching your house?
It's going matching my house.
Okay. And I guess the last question I have would be, are you performing any type of commercial activity out of the, out of the
I am not. I don't know where she got that at, and worrying about diesels and what I do for a living is completely irrelevant.
Now that's coming home to this location.
No.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all I have. Any additional questions for the, from the commission before we go to Gunnar Hand for his comment?
No, I don't believe so.
The commissioners? Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and go to Director Hand for his comment on this case.
Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Again, before us is a variance for an accessory structure to exceed the maximum allowed, 1,000 square feet in a single-family zone. This is in the Turner neighborhood, just off Dover, as we've been hearing from some of the adjacent residents. Some pictures of the property to date, as well as the, sort of as was mentioned, the not driveway entrance on the other side of the property that we've seen. You can see here the barn, that's in the rear yard and the existing structure. We actually received a last, a late submission that we were not able to put into the staff reports over the weekend before submitting those out. We did receive updated plan and renderings. So this is the old two versions where he had proposed, the applicant had proposed to push the building back simply back 15 feet. It was going to look something to the effect of this. We received some renderings from the company that builds these barns. Since we've received a resubmission of that with a smaller footprint, generally in the same vicinity on the west side of the property, changing the dimensions and the entries and exits to something more akin to this. Looks like it's got a main garage door, main primary pedestrian door and a side door facing, this would face the existing single-family residents. As you've heard tonight, we've heard quite a few and received quite a few letters of opposition to this case. With the recent submission, however, it is meeting all of the conditions of approval in the past two times, having held over that we were working on. It is less than the primary structure size of the primary structure at approximately 1,800 square feet. That's about 25 square feet smaller than his single-family home. To specifically address some of the other questions I heard tonight, there is a condition of approval that all accessory structures that are currently on the property be removed before this building is constructed. Essentially, all existing accessory structures, whether they're permitted or not, would have to fold into this larger accessory structure. So there is not this and a shed, it's this and only this on the property. And the third primary condition that we've carried since the original holdover in May was that the building materials match the primary structure. There is a clause in the code as written that, yes, you have to match the primary structure, including metal can be used for the walls of the unit, provided they have a factory applied and painted finish closely matching the color of the primary structure. As long as the manufacturer can do so, again, we worked with the applicant to do horizontal instead of vertical siding. If it comes painted, it should be, it should meet the requirements of the code. Staff would be amenable to an additional condition of approval if the Board of Zoning Appeals sought so fit to require an SUP, again, required by the code, but to require SUP or, or for any commercial business to be operated on the property or just outright have a condition that no commercial activity can be held on the property, if that, if that was an issue for the residents. So that, while staff did recommend denial, because we had not received this last submission, as the submission came in and it met all of our existing requirements that we've been talking about for the last two Board of Zoning Appeals hearings, staff has changed their recommendation to approval with the condition.
And Gunnar, is that approval for an 1,800-square-foot structure?
Yes, it would be amended to an 1,800-square-foot structure.
And can you address the height of that structure?
The height didn't have any dimensions. We've talked about that in previous meetings. The height limit is two and a half stories of 35 feet in an R1 district, and it could not exceed 35 feet. It would not receive a building permit if it did.
Okay, because that seems like a pretty tall structure for a residential area. This is not on acreage, is that correct?
I think it's almost exactly an acre. Half an acre.
So two and a half stories tall structure built in back of a one-story tall structure. That's going to be pretty dominating. Would you, would you agree?
Yes, in the fact that it faces the front yard, even though it's pushed back. But again, if it's under 35 feet, it is allowed. Both the primary and the accessory have the same height limit.
Okay.
By nature is understandable.
Okay, questions for the director on the commissioners? Commissioner Jones?
Gunnar, can you go back and say there was some concern about driveway? What kind of driveway, again, would be going to this building and then material? Is it, did you say metal?
The proposed accessory structure is a prefab metal, prefab metal building that would arrive on site essentially either as a kit of parts or constructed. The code allows that metal building to have a factory finish to match the primary structure. So it is allowed by code to have a metal accessory building, so long as it has that factory paint on it. It's not something where you can bring in a metal. The exception, the, what we're trying to avoid, I guess, with that specific code section is to have a metal building brought on site and then painted it a certain way. So the factory finish just lasts longer, has a better lifespan, things of that nature. In regards to the driveway, Mr. Morton will have to receive a right-of-way permit from Public Works to have a second access onto the public right-of-way from his property. There are standards applied to that, but there are many single-family home parcels that have two driveways in and out. The requirements in terms of materiality in R1 district is it's got to be an improved surface. It's got to be either asphalt, or it's got to be concrete. Public Works requires the apron up to the property line, so generally about, you know, from the curb back is generally 10, 15, sometimes 20 feet, depending on where you are. That is required to be concrete so that there is no tracking, which was one of the comments from the public.
And so Gunnar, just to confirm, then, a report we had, and I know you got information late, but the, with components, the statutory requirements, because there were multiple ones, those are all met and good from your perspective?
Except for the variance for the size, correct?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions from the commission for Director Hand? Seeing none, then I will entertain a motion. Anyone?
Motion to deny due to neighborhood opposition.
You have to give another reason other than opposition.
The size is too large.
The motion made for denial by Commissioner Polly due to the size of the structure doesn't conform with the neighborhood is seconded by Commissioner Ernst. Is there any discussion on motion for denial? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Armstrong?
Hi.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Pauli?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, their motion to deny this appeal due to the size of this structure, and it does not conform to the neighborhood, passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is BOZA 2021-016, Whitney Vincent with Taco Republic for property at 500 County Line Road. Please include the, oh, I'm sorry, I want the wrong meeting. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
No.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to note for the record that this application was held over from last month's meeting for the parking agreement to be verified, and additional information was submitted and is in your packet.
Thank you. Whitney Vincent, are you in the audience or someone representing Taco Republic? Please raise your hand so I can call on you. Whitney Vincent. Is there anyone in the audience tonight representing Taco Republic? Please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. Gunnar, can you give us a quick synopsis of this, and I'll go ahead and open up the public for comment, just so we know what we're talking about?
Yes, Mr. Chair, again, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. This case is tied to PR 2021-014, that the planning commission will hear later this evening. It's for an off-site parking for a total of 11 required spaces over the 100-feet limit for customer parking. Taco Republic has essentially exited a lease agreement with a pre, another surface parking lot that was to the north of the building. They have renegotiated a parking agreement for a surface parking lot associated with the retail business south and east of their current location. It's actually in Westwood. It's about 162 feet over, 260, there is two feet total. So this, this will essentially allow the variance for being farther than 100 feet away. The plan commission will hear a plan review that will simply update the parking agreement condition of approval from the original approval for the, for the restaurant. Um, from the original, um, approval for the, for the restaurant.
I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public portion of the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak in favor or in opposition to this? Case, please raise your hand and I'll call on you. Okay, Ryan Barrows. Got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Ryan Barrows, fifteen fifteen Hodges Lane, Raymore, Missouri.
Hand.
And the, the question I would have is, is the last time, uh, this came before the, before the council, we were basically just. Questioning the use of the eleven additional spark parking spaces as they were, uh, originally written for. I believe it was, uh. Monday through Friday evenings from five thirty on and Saturday and Sunday all day. Mr. Hand had said that would not appease the parking requirement since they were not full-time spots. Just curious as to, uh, if there's an update on that or if there is, uh, what, what has been done there?
Gunner, can you go ahead and address those concerns?
Yes, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Uh, Mr. Vincent supplied a revised parking agreement with the, um, new property owner. That includes eleven parking spaces, um, twenty-four, seven and the full twenty-two spaces in their peak periods. So I think it was five thirty to nine, Monday through Sunday or something like that. So it, it meets the zoning requirement and goes above and beyond it in fact.
Then answer your question, Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak to this case? Okay, saying none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand for his comment.
Again, Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. I'll just quickly go through this since we gave most of the, the details in the case. Again, this is in the Rosedale neighborhood. Right on County Line Road in Mission. You can see the Taco Republic aerial here. The location of the parking is just off this picture, just south of the. I think this is a Walmart neighborhood store, if I remember correctly. Um, in the city of Westwood. Um, so they would have to cross the intersection twice. Um, this is the updated parking agreement to, that matches, uh, what we just confirmed and read. So twenty-two for, um, from five thirty to nine. The other eleven, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, and you can kind of see it here. It's just south of the. The primary business right there on the corner, south of Westwood Spots, this parking location right here. And the only condition of approval, um, of notes is the notice to the property owner that if the parking arrangement. Changes again, they will be subject to not only another final development plan, but potentially another variance depending on where that is. Staff recommends approval.
Questions for Director Hand? Okay, saying none, I'll stand for a motion.
Motion to approve, subject to staff comments, stipulations.
Second.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ernst, were you gonna make a motion?
I will. Let's go with what we've got.
Okay, I'm sorry, motion to approve is made by Commissioner Jones, is seconded by Commissioner Conley, I believe. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Saying none, roll call.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Conley.
Hi.
Ernst.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Paulie.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions and the staff report, passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to make an announcement about the planning commission meeting, please?
Yes, I would. For those of you here for the planning commission meeting that normally starts at six thirty, we are running just a little bit behind with our board of zoning appeals and, and. So once we finish with that agenda, we will take a five minute recess and then we will convene the city planning commission. So I appreciate your patience tonight.
Our next appeal is BOZA twenty twenty-one dash zero one seven. Seth Reese with Olson for property at ninety-six twenty-five Leavenworth Road. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Reese. Or Mr. Olson, sorry, Seth Reese. Are you in the audience? Okay, there you go. Got you queued up to speak, Mr. Reese. Go ahead and give us your name and address. Go ahead and unmute yourself. There you go.
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, Seth Reese with Olson, seven three zero one. One hundred and thirty-third Street, Overland Park, Kansas is my address. And just, is there a chance I could share my screen?
Yes, Janet, can you promote him over?
Yeah, let me find him real quick here. I might can take care of that.
So as you.
Okay, Mr. Reese, you're good now.
Here we go. Can everybody see my screen and hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um, appreciate everybody's time. This is just, uh, I've been working with the gardeners, Ms. Gardner. Uh, on the property that is on Leavenworth Road, uh, just east of ninety-ninth street. Uh, Woodlands Development that's currently under construction. Is lines up with her, her driveway into her property and part of the, when the Woodlands development was rezoned, part of that. Rezoning had a stipulation that we would, uh, construct a, a wall, screen wall kind of in her. Yard to help screen and lessen the impact to the development to her property. So that's, that's what this variance request is for. Um, to, to kind of, uh, meet that stipulation. We've been working with her, uh, to hopefully get a, a. Solution that everybody's happy with. So. Uh, I will go through this and if there's any questions, by all means, let me know. So as I mentioned, the, the Woodlands property access point is right here. Her driveway, as you can see, lines up. So what we are proposing to do is. Provide a, a screen wall that will kind of step up the slope, uh, at the highest point. It'll be eight foot tall. And then it will, uh, kind of slope, kind of go into the grade. It will step down. From eight foot to six foot and then down to four foot as you go further west, because the grade actually goes up as you go that way. So. Um, with that, the proposed wall will be a, it'll be a concrete. Cobblestone wall. This is kind of the detail from the engineer. Uh, so these are precast panels that will ha, make it look like a natural, uh, kind of cobblestone look. That, uh, will step up and help, help kind of soften the, the sound and the noise. Uh, from her, from the adjacent development. The, I'll show you a picture here. So this is. This is the, uh, Woodlands Development access point right here. And you can see this is her, uh, driveway. And property, this is their house right here. Um, if you. Grab, this is looking, uh, kind of across Leavenworth Road. This is her property as well. And then this is a, a photograph from actually right in front of her, uh, bedroom. Window that shows that the driveway kind of lines right up for, with it. So what we're proposing is putting kind of that screen wall right here to help. Kind of block those headlights as they come down. That way it doesn't, uh, negatively impact, uh. And it'll help, uh, with sound and light. So. With that being said, um. I, I'm here to answer any questions. Kind of the two variances are, uh, the, the standard city, uh, requirement is a four-foot fence in your front yard. That has, I think it's forty percent open. It has to be a forty percent open. So we're requesting two variances. One of them to allow a taller fence. Uh, that goes up to eight foot. And then another thing, since we, we don't want it to be, uh, open, we want it to be so, a solid fence. Uh, to help, uh, screen the sound and the light. So those are the two variance requests that we're, we're requesting with this application.
Okay, any questions from the commission to, uh, Mr. Reese? Seeing now, we'll open up the public portion of the meeting. Anyone want to speak in favor of or in opposition's request? I have Ms. Gardner. Queued up to speak. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Ms. Gardner, and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Joy Gardner. I live at ninety-six twenty-five Leavenworth Road, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh nine. I want to thank Seth for getting this in front of the committee tonight. And we have been talking about it for a year. So it's, 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 we're ready to get this wall.
Okay, build the wall.
Difference. I thank you very much.
All right, great, thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight? Please raise your hand. Saying none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand for his comment.
King, Mr. Chair, this is Gunner Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Um, again, I think you have most of the information from the applicant's comments, but it is for two. Two variances. Um, a wall over four feet and a, a completely screened, uh, wall as opposed to a transparent wall in the front yard. Um, this is again, uh, specifically, uh, a condition of approval for a mitigation measure essentially for the Woodlands redevelopment across. Um, across the street of Leavenworth and, uh, Prairie Delaware Piper neighborhood. Uh, you've seen some of these pictures. I think it was important for us. Um, you can see sort of Ms. Gardner's house and the adjusted driveway and walls here. Cause of the grade, it kind of starts at four to six and then slowly makes its way all the way up to eight feet. Um, when it gets to the low point, additionally because of the grade, um, and because the wall couldn't be in the public right of way, because it, because Leavenworth is currently a. State highway and kid out wouldn't allow it. Um, there was a limited amount of space on where they could actually locate the wall. Um, it couldn't push back too far. There's a little thin strip of, of land of, if you will, right in front of the. Uh, wall and inside the property line, staff is asked to expand the landscaping for this wall to help soften that view. Um, from the public right of way, but this is a good picture that sort of puts into perspective all the other public improvements of woodland happening around Ms. Gardner's property. And how, um, she would or, or is currently being impacted by that construction project. There are no opposition, no letters of support. Uh, there's a few old NOBs in the property, but very old and have been rectified. Staff recommends approval.
Questions for Director Hand? He's saying none, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Ernst.
I regret that Ms. Gardner has very little choice, but if she is good with this. I move the Board of Zoning Appeals, approved case BOZA twenty twenty-one dash zero one seven, subject to staff stipulations.
Okay, motion to approve made by Commissioner Ernst. Was that second by Mr. Conley?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on motion for approval? Saying none, roll call, please.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Conley.
Hi.
Ernst.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Paulie.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve this appeal, subject to the conditions and the staff report, passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next appeal is BOZA twenty twenty-one dashes zero one eight. Curtis Peterson with Paulsonelli for property at twelve oh one North ninety-eighth Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
You?
I'm sorry, Mr. Peterson. Believe you're in the audience. There we go. Okay, there you go.
I'm sorry, did you say Charlene Jones?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Sorry, you were jumping on the screen when you raised your hand and I think I muted somebody else by mistake. So I think we're good now.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the BZA, my name is Kurt Peterson with an address of nine hundred West Forty-Eighth Place, Kansas City, Missouri. Uh, here on behalf of the applicant, tonight we have four requested variances for the Camping World Project. The, uh, can I share a screen, Mr. Chairman?
Of course, Janet.
But you're jumping around on the screen on me too here. Here you are. Okay, you're ready to go.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me now?
Yes, uh-huh.
Wow, I think Janet's playing tricks on me and then she muted me. Joking, joking, yeah, not you. Uh, can you see the slide on the screen now?
No.
Okay.
But we do have you promoted, I believe, to be able to do so.
Kurt, your video is off.
Okay, we'll take care of a couple issues here. Close.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, are we good now?
Yes, do you have to have a fourth grader there that could assist you, Mr. Peterson?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we're, we're, I, I can now see your, your thing. We're, we're good now. We're, we're on our way.
Very good. So there's four requested variances tonight before you related to the Camping World Project. The first, if we get context here before we get to the first, our site is, this is the Menard Store that may have us know at four thirty-five and State Avenue. Western Wyandotte County. This is the subject site. It's about twelve acres just to the south and east of Menards. The Camping World Project is the construction of approximately a thirty-eight thousand square foot camping RV dealership, which handles both sales. And service of recreational vehicles. Camping World, as many of you know, is a nationwide publicly traded company on the New York Stock Exchange. It's been hotly pursued to come to the county for several years, frankly, to the state. And then it was a huge coup to get them. To come to this particular site in Wyandotte County. It was a highly competitive process. There are approximately sixty new jobs that will come to this location with high average wages, everything from highly compensated salespersons to finance. Finance folks to, uh, service techs, um, all of which have high average wages. Finally, uh, this deal was secured with Camping World, subject to, as you can imagine, getting through the lane use entitlement process, which does bring us to the business at hand. Which is four different variances required for this project. Now, the first two variances, knowing that, uh, you have a rich packet for BZA and, and have been through everything. Certainly, I will be prepared and want to discuss any questions anyone on the BZA might have about variances one and two of four. But since they have full staff support and there's a rich record, I will not speak to those. Except for any, again, questions you might have that. Again, I'd be happy to speak to those. So I'm gonna skip to what is numbered as variance. Three and variance four. Variance three is the, involves a flag that would be located. Right about here. This is one of the two access points to the site. Right about there where the cursor is. The, like I said, the third variance involves the flag and specifically the flag area or the face, size of the face of the flag. The proposed flag is approximately three thousand two hundred square feet. And the maximum flag area in CP three is fifty square feet. The second is the height of the flag pole that holds that flag up, which is, um. Between tw- twenty-five feet and in that zoning classification up to fifty feet maximum. This proposed height is a hundred and thirty feet. So that's variance three and variance four in short. Rather than take your time to go through, as you and all know, sitting at this body, there are the five criteria to go through for each requested variance, rather than doing that for. Sake of time, since you've been through the packing and, and seen all of that. sake of time, since you've been through the packing and seen all of that written out and dissected factor by factor, I thought what I would do is summarize the key points that staff has made, the key concerns into three topics, address those, and then stand for any questions. The first concern of staff that's been expressed has to do with what I'll call uniqueness or precedent involving these two variances. The proposed project involves, as I said, a nationwide, and I mean nationwide, company with over fifty years of experience in this space, whose corporate philosophy and branding require, and I underline require without exception, this particular height and size flag. And just as a fact check, because facts are important, Googling this topic with Camping World shows my statements to be true. This exact size flag and height of pole flies above the hundreds of stores across the country that Camping World has. How many companies could prove with such an incredible sort of ubiquitous track record the essential nature to the operations of their business and the existence of each location, the nature and size of this flag? The precedent as staff is concerned about understandably is that this would create is merely non-existent as you think through the fact pattern on which this request is based. The second topic that staff has focused on in the report is the aesthetics and as they relate to neighbors and also property values as they relate to neighbors. My first statement is suggesting this is something that is an eyesore or not invited is stating the obvious is subjective. Many, I would say, most would not find this offensive in the least. And objectively now, switching from subjective to objective, objectively, there's no support for the concept that this flag of this size and height in this particular location would lower the property value of the immediate neighbor, Menards, which everyone knows is, you know, over a hundred thousand foot big box hardware store or any other portion of this mixed-use master development in which this particular twelve acre sits. So we really, we just disagree on anything related to poor aesthetics or property values and anything of the sort. The third item staff brought up was public safety. The primary item. And on this one, Mr. Chairman, I would just say, having to be a nerd of land use and signage and all that, I know there might be others that relate and and have been around this literature. I can assert there is no literature that I've ever come across that has suggested the size of a flag has caused a traffic accident or any other harm to the public. Just to show legitimacy here, the only literature I've ever seen of anything close to that, and this is debatable, there's literature on both sides, is that a moving billboard or a sign that rotates, right, changes that perhaps that one someone could be distracted. Never have I heard of anything related to public safety and a flag of this size and sort. So with that, those are the primary concerns we've read in the staff report and discussed with staff, and you've heard our responses as to why, you know, we would ask for your support tonight for not only the first two variances, but the third and the fourth variance against against staff's negative recommendation. In conclusion, before standing for questions, I wanted to touch on stipulations. And to make it easy, I do have a slide, two slides to follow along in short. First, related, because there's four variances, I'll group them accordingly. Variance number one and variance, I'm sorry, one precursor that helps. Each of the items I'm about to share, which are not many and just a few, staff is in support and staff will speak for themselves in a moment. But in speaking with staff, all of these are supported by professional staff. First of all, variances one and two. The applicant agrees with conditions one and three through eleven. That leaves stipulation number two for quick modification request. Stipulation number two states that any variances granted by the BZA tonight will only be effective if both the Planning Commission positively recommends and the Board of County Commissioners approves the associated preliminary development plan and preliminary plat that will be up before Planning Commission's night. Staff and the applicant agree that should only refer to subject to the approval of PDP and preliminary plat by the Board of Commissioners, and that's what's reflected on the screen. Finally, with respective variances, variance number and stipulations, variance number three and variance number four. There are two, there are three items to flag. One is identical to what we just discussed. So on the screen, stipulation number one would make that same modification, striking the reference to Planning Commission. Next, stipulation two and three are nearly identical when it comes to what the point is of those. So I'll speak to them together, but you can see the individual proposed revisions on the screen, which is this, if the if the flag pole is provided a variance that is variance just three and four tonight and and the PDP moves forward at Planning Commission's night, rather than having any associated landscaping around the flagpole and the light for the flag come back to a its separate revised PDP, it will just go straight to final plan. And that is which, again, will go to Planning Commission. It will go to full Board of County Commissioners. Again, all these proposed stipulations have been discussed with staff and they're supportive of those. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I've got Commissioner Connolly got a question.
Yes, I have a question. Do you have any pictures of, do you have a pictures of the flag since they have all these flags flying everywhere or in other locations? Do you have a picture of the flag?
I don't have it keyed up in my presentation, but even as we speak, Mr. Connolly, we could probably pull some of those images for you.
Okay, go ahead. I'd like to see it.
And I don't know, Chairman, if you want to wait while our team is doing that, or you want to move on to other questions?
Sure, we'll see. We'll see what other questions we've got while you're doing that. Any other questions for the applicant? I guess we're gonna wait. That might prompt some additional questions if they can actually see one.
I'm asking technological questions right now while I mute you just because we're putting it on this laptop.
That's fine. I've got some pulled up on Google myself, and I just got back from Texas where I've seen a lot of these flying over major car dealerships and other Camping World dealerships, so.
That's okay. I'm about I'm about to put one up here. It's coming into the email right now. You get some that are done. Melissa, what site?
Over there.
Chairman?
Yes.
Anytime you try to do something like this, it's bound to have technology. We're on our way to it. I just feel bad. People are waiting.
That's all right. Gunner, do you have anything? I mean, I've got I've got Google pulled up and have some.
I'm trying to pull one. There's Camping World in, I think it's Independence. Maybe even farther on Green Valley. I'm trying to pull that one up right now from.
Let me, let me, let me try mine. Can you guys see this? Can you all see my screen? Commissioner Connolly?
Yeah, I can see it.
Gives you some examples.
Okay, so it's the American flag. So I'm I'm assuming that they will secure that flag as other people do. No rips, no tears.
There's actually a two, always two flags on site just for that reason, because there's no room for any sort of maintenance issues to happen.
Is everybody okay with the with what we've got here? Any other questions before I stop sharing my screen? You good, Mr. Connolly? Excuse me, sir?
I'm good.
All right, thank you. Okay, other questions for the applicant? There we go. Other questions for the applicant? Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public portion of the meeting. Anyone in the audience tonight want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand so I can call on. Not seeing anyone, so we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand for his comment.
King was chairs is going to enter to plan urban design. As the applicant mentioned, there are four variances being requested. Staff recommends approval of the first two and recommends now second two. The first two are related to parking. Again, just to orient ourselves, this is a proposal for the Camping World site to be developed in the former Schler顿site, now Home Field, just off of State Avenue ninety-eighth. In the Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan, a better view of it right here, the old Schler顿on in the reverse, which has been demolished. Again, it's just a greenfield site currently with infrastructure on on the site. We did do quite a bit of work with the applicant, and you'll hear more about that at the City Planning Commission hearing. Again, this one's tied to changes on twenty twenty-one dash zero two-two as well as plat twenty twenty-one dash zero one four. The first parking variance is for a reduction in the number of spaces by thirty-three required. Staff believes there is ample amount of parking for visitors in the existing surface parking lot adjacent to the site. We've said this multiple times in other parking variance requests that that we believe the code is overparked in general. And so staff recommends approval of that one. The second one is also related to parking, but if you can think about it by bifurcating the two different parking lots, if you will, there's the one for employees, excuse me, the one for customers, which does have all the required parking islands. And then there's the one for all of the RVs and trailers and things of that nature, which do not have any parking islands, and that is what we're seeking for in the variance. The applicant has taken all of the required landscaping from those parking islands that would be have occurred and put them somewhere else on the property predominantly in locations to help screen to help screen that lot. Again, there is some uniqueness to that case. Simply, it's while we do require the commercial design guidelines in this specific code requirement for parking islands in parking lots for car dealerships, those are the size of car stalls. Camping World stacks all of their inventory in these lots. And between the maneuverability and the size of them, it's it's just a little bit of a different animal. So we were thinking of screening the whole enclosed area as opposed to providing sort of intermittenary, intermittenary, excuse me, parking islands accordingly. So staff does recommend approval of that variance. The other two variances related to the flag specifically. Again, the first one, the sign code allows for fifty square feet. And we're asking for a approximately thirty-two hundred square foot flag that is a sixty-three hundred percent over what's allowed. There is a provision in the code that for businesses along freeways, you can essentially double the size of your square feet area as well as double the size of the height of a sign. So we could think of a hundred square foot flag being allowed or a pole that does go up to fifty-one feet as opposed to the allowed twenty-five foot, twenty-five and a half foot. But that is current request is again sixty-three hundred percent over what is allowed and about four times as tall as what is loud. Again, if you take in that second, it's double what is allowed in height. I think what we would say for these, both of these is while while it is a flag, specifically an American flag, in the sign code, there is no difference between a sign and a flag. So what we're essentially talking about is a sign that is sixty hundred, sixty-three hundred percent larger than what this code allows. We don't feel like it gets anywhere close to the intent of the zoning code, and we recommend it out for both.
Questions for the director? I have one for legal counsel. Do we still have Daniel or do we have Patrick? Daniel? In in looking at this, and I know we're looking at it from a sign perspective, are we getting ourselves in any type of situation that if somebody comes down the road a year from now, whatever, and wants to build, wants to erect a sign, an actual sign that's sixty-three hundred square feet outside of our requirement, are we are we getting ourselves in any type of situation? Because to me, I see that I see that personally, I see the flag differently than I see a sign, even though I know that the code considers them the same. I want your opinion from a legal perspective. Do we have the right to turn down something down the road that is that is similar in size, even though it's not a would not be a flag, it would be maybe a stationary sign or something of that nature?
I think there is the danger of it setting a precedential value. I understand yours, the distinction between a sign and a flag, and that is an argument that could that could be made, but there is the danger of it setting a precedent, yes.
All right, thank you. Questions for the director? Commissioner Ernst. Go ahead and mute, sir.
Try it again.
There you go.
Gunner, how would we make the motion for variance one and two and not three and four? How would we separate it? Motion wise.
So this is going to enter to plan urban design. I think that you could make the motion to approve the two and then hold off a second emotion for the second two. I did forget to mention that staff does agree with the applicant on those changes to the conditions of approval for all of them. There they were some typos essentially, and we did, we do, yeah, we agree with them. So I think you could make those with the changes, recommend approval of the first two variants with proposed changes.
One more, one more question, please. The variances are in perpetuity with the property?
This is their end term design that is correct.
It does anything change that? Or the next guy can come in with a car lot when Camping World moves to much bigger, better accommodations? And they don't have to have the stripes, et cetera?
Varian sticks with the land.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, when you're done with that, and then I just asked permission to show the high def picture I got in, but please obviously continue with what you're doing.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what you just said? You're you're, we don't have a great connection on your on your audio, Mr. Peterson.
When when we come to an appropriate stopping point, I'd like to share that picture that we were look that's high def that finally came in.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and show that? Because that might prompt my follow-up question. But it will prompt my follow-up question, but go ahead.
Is that on the screen, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, that that I just wanted to show a high-def one rather than just off Google images. That really gives a sense for the scale of the building and the lot size and and.
Can you tell me, can you tell me the size of the lot of this particular dealership?
This is what you're talking, right? And it has both, right? So it's really that, right? And am I doing the right area? So excuse the whispering to make sure I get my facts right. So where if you watch the cursor, it's going to outline approximately eighteen acres. It goes off screen to more RV storage area and comes back around. So about eighteen acres. There's the building.
That's an eighteen acre site, and ours is a twelve acre.
Exactly right.
Okay, and this is located in Wichita?
This one is the Wichita location. That's right.
Okay. And are you aware or anybody that's in your in your group there? Are there any dealerships that do not have this type of makeup, this type of flag situation on any of the Camping World dealerships? And how many? Can you give me an idea of how many of those are?
Yeah, that's a great point. So using round numbers, appropriately rounded numbers, we're talking about effectively a couple hundred Camping Worlds across the country Yeah, that's a great point. So using round numbers, appropriately rounded numbers, we're talking about effectively a couple hundred Camping Worlds across the country with the exact size flag in little towns, medium towns, big towns, of every type. And the only ones that don't have this exact flag right now, height and flag area would be really one of two situations only. The small number that are in approvals right now, just like this one, would be one. And the second would be there are a couple situations that there were FAA requirements, and the CEO of Camping World, sorry, did I say that clearly, FAA? As in airplanes, either near a military or other airport that have required some modifications, and the Mr. Lamontis, the CEO of Camping World, has come on TV and explained those few situations, and that's that's the only exception you'd find pending approvals for the few FAA situations. Otherwise, it's this exact flag size across the country.
And are there any dealerships across the country that have a have the flag, but it's less than thirty-two hundred square feet, let's say a two thousand square feet or a fifteen hundred square foot flag?
That kind of goes back to the uniqueness of this and the lack of any precedent being created. The answer is absolutely not. This is the flag.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't know if you wanted Mr. Hand to elaborate perhaps, or or any of the commissioners do on the point about running with the land. It was a good question that was asked. I I noted in the staff report at page nine that staff said, quote, "Any change to the design, dimensions, or circumstances of the subject property may void the variance and or require a newer amended variance to be requested." So it's our humble opinion that if Camping World's not there, there's a very strong argument. We can't speculate about exactly what would be on that site, but there's a very strong argument that would not run with the land. I don't know if you all wanted to get deep into that discussion right now or not, but I thought it was worth citing that spot in the staff report.
Can I get a comment from legal on that? Daniel, are we tying our hands with something like this that will run with the land and something we can't reevaluate with another another tenant down the road?
Bear with me, let me look at the staff report again.
And Gunner, you can jump back in as well while he's looking at that.
This is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. I think in the past, we've written conditions of approval that have made that have been very intentional and specific about a variance only staying with a property owner. Generally, variances stick with the land.
Which we'd be happy with here, as you'd imagine, Mr. Chairman. We'd be happy to narrow it to this owner.
So we have done that in the past, Gunner?
Yes.
Alright, and Daniel, you would see no problem if the restrictions only ran with the current landowner? Or you don't believe we're we're being in a putting ourselves in a tough situation?
No, I would not see any problems with that.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Ernst, since that was your question, does that provide any additional clarity for you?
And it's what I believe to be the case, so yes.
Alright, thank you. Any additional questions for legal or for Director Hand? Commissioner Connolly? I'm sorry. Okay, I will stand for a motion. Commissioner Ernst?
I'm going to attempt to make the motion that the Board of Zoning Appeals approve variances one and two of BOZA twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one-eight.
Okay.
Subject to staff stipulations.
It's been moved, its motion is made to approve variances one and two in this case. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Jones. Is that correct, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So it's moved to second to approve variances one and two. Any discussion on approval?
Yeah, I I.
Motion for approval, excuse me.
Yeah, I guess so. Approving one and two pretty much takes away three and four. Is that is that what we said, or we gotta go back and vote on three?
We're gonna be looking at three and four after this.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Okay, motion on the floor is to approve variances one and two requested by the applicant. Has been moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call. This will be on approval of variances one and two.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Paulie?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve variances one and two of this appeal, subject to the revised conditions, passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Okay, now, variances three and four are on the table. Any additional questions, or we'll stand for a motion?
Mr. Mr. Chair, before you do that, just a point of clarification, Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design, if the Board of Zoning Appeals did want to move forward with approval of three and floor, we not only need the modifications as proposed by the applicant, but staff would ask that we also include the that those variances be tied to this specific case and not for not carry with the land in the future. And we can write that, we can write that language, but that would be that would be not just a modification, but an additional stipulation if that's.
It would be an additional stipulation if there was such a motion for approval.
Yes, please, thank you.
Alright. Any questions for the director on those additional stipulations? They sing none. Commissioner Armstrong, I see your hand up first.
I didn't have any questions. I just wanted to make a motion.
Alright, Commissioner Ernst, did you have a question?
Question for Gunner. If we deny this flag, does that deny all flags, or can they come back with a alternative?
It would have to be substantially different flags, so it would have to be a different size.
Understood.
Commissioner Armstrong, sorry, any additional questions?
Mr. Chairman, given the gravity of this, might just make one more statement, which I probably was probably implicit, but just make explicit. And this is Googleable literally right now by anybody, if that's appropriate. If this flag isn't approved, that's why all the stores, other than the exceptions I said pending or FAA is not approved tonight, then we we can't even move forward tonight at Planning Commission, and we lose Camping World. So just a quick making sure the fact is out there, and then the BCA can act accordingly. Thank you, Chairman.
I am going to check you on your, I'm going to Google your Googleable to see if that's a word. Okay, Commissioner Connolly, do you have a question?
I I guess, yeah. What was the percentage? How large, extra large is that? Is that sixty-three percent?
Sixty-three hundred.
Six, oh my God. Okay, thanks.
It's fifty square feet is what's allowed under the sign order. This is this is thirty-two hundred.
Oh my God. Alright, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Armstrong, did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I did. If that's appropriate at this time.
Unless there are any additional questions, go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, then I move to approve variances three and four, subject to staff stipulation, and that it it stays tied solely to this owner and doesn't run with the land.
So your motion is for approval of variances three and four with the additional staff stipulations that were brought up earlier by the director?
Correct.
Alright, is there a second to the motion for approval? Commissioner Ernst?
I will second it just to get it out there.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded for approval with the additional staff stipulations. Discussion on the motion for approval. Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Connolly?
No.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Mr. Muller?
I'm sorry, aye.
Thank you.
Paulie?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve variances three and four of this appeal, subject to the staff's conditions, passes five in favor and two opposed.
Alright, thank you. Believe we have one case left. Is that correct, Janet?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Our last case for the Board of Zoning Appeals is BOZA twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one-nine. Brett Ricketts for property at two-two-two North James Street. Does any member of the board have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Ricketts, are you in the audience? There we go. Okay, I've got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us about this case and your your request.
My name is Brett Ricketts, 10350 Richland Avenue, Ottawa, Utah. And for some reason, I feel like I'm following a, I don't remember, Bailey, like three ring circus. I have a relatively simple variance request. I bought a lot down on James Street, a gravel lot, and it's surrounded by gravel lot, and there's gravel properties on all three sides of that, and I and I wanted to put a driveway in so I can access this lot. Right now, there's no direct access. It's in the, it's in the it's confined by another property with a fence around it, and I need to put a driveway in so I can access it. And what I want to do is leave it gravel. And the variance is to not have to finish asphalt or concrete the entire lot just for the driveway. And I'll basically just run through a couple of the factors to be considered that that were given to me. Most of the driveways in that area are gravel. I mean, most of the lots are gravel with a cement driveway. The majority, I think seventy percent. There was a map that I included in in the package. I didn't see it, but it showed the ones that are gravel. And so it's not disrupting from the normality of the area. It's quite, it's quite common with the area. And let's see, affecting the adjacent property rights, you know, if you leave it as it is, it's it's not affecting anything more than it is right now. They're all gravel right now, and mine stand gravel wouldn't, you know, couldn't couldn't affect. The hardship, there's some comments in the, would this cause a hardship to me? This is not a commercial storage lot, and this is not for a commercial business. I am planning on using this thing for a staging area for for cars and trucks that I work on. I work on them in my garage at my house, which is nowhere near this, and I need a place to stage these. And when you offload a car onto this and shove it around, you just, you just have to have gravel. You know, you can't, you can't drag a car across concrete or asphalt. For one thing, and then the hardship is basically the class. I've got a number of bids for asphalt, which is cheaper than concrete asphalt, for the sixty-two hundred square feet is somewhere between five and fifteen dollars a square foot. And so there was a comment from from one of the from the variance people that said that, you know, it shouldn't be that expensive, and that, you know, they found a price at about forty-eight thousand dollars. And if this was a commercial business, I can understand amortizing something, you know, for forty-eight thousand dollars. This is not. This is, this is mine. I'm retiring in a year. This is good, you know, my plan is to have this, and eventually, maybe if everything works, it turns out, you know, everything works, I can start a start a business there, have a we can go that way, but for right now, it's it's a personal thing. I stage cars for rehab, rehabilitation on these vehicles, mostly actually all for friends and and family, mostly family. It's not a salvage. There's no disassembling or, you know, cutting up cars or anything like that. It's it's simply a staging area like a driveway. I just can't have a dozen cars in my driveway. And this was was a perfect, perfect place to do that. And even if I asphalted this at adding fifty ground, the appraisal, appraisal on the property is nine thousand dollars. If I put asphalt on there, the appraisal would be ten thousand. And spit, you know, spit on it, it would be fifty, you know, fifty-eight thousand dollars. That's just not a good, that just doesn't make sense. Um, that's basically it. Some some of my images did not make it. If you want, I can show you some images of the area and how this is, it fits in as gravel, kind of, it's part of the deal. If you want, if you want share my screen, I can show you some of these.
Janet, do you have available study? Can you share a screen if you need to?
Yeah, I will get him promoting and then giving. Okay, Mr. Ricketts, you should be able to show your screen now.
Mr. Ricketts, are you still with us? You should unmute yourself, please. There you go.
There we go. Sorry about that. Alright, can you see this screen?
Yes.
Alright, this is basically First Street, which is behind my property. And the street that I'm standing on is Ohio, which is next to my property, and this is a business behind it. This is another business on First Street, which is directly behind my property, and this gravel road is First Street. It's it's not an alley. Here's another property that's on the east east side of my property. It's all gravel, and it has gravel clear up to the sidewalk. Here's a, here's a third property, heavy industrial, everything's heavy industrial around. This is First Street also. This is a main street, and they're just gravel. I don't know if they'll ever be improved. And then let's see. There's another one. This is First Street. This property right here is the property that my that mine is in that we're sharing. Again, First Street. Okay, here's a map. If you can see, this light blue is my property right here. This is James Street. All these properties in blue or dirt or gravel with concrete driveways, which is what I'm wanting to do. All dirt, all gravel, all dirt. The green is is blacktop. So my area constitutes about point one percent of all the gravel, so improving it really, I I would probably say, isn't going to do anything. And that's that's about all I have, I guess.
Okay, question, questions for the applicant? I I just have one. Are there any plans to lease any portion of the lot to any of the area businesses around?
Is there any to do what?
Any plans to lease any portion of the lots, any of the businesses that are that are around your your property?
I am not planning on leasing any lots.
Okay. And can you explain the comment you made that you can't put a car on asphalt and move it around?
You can't drive.
I'm sorry?
You cannot drag a car effectively on asphalt.
And what would be the purpose of dragging a car? What kind of cars would you be dragging over asphalt or dirt?
Ones that I need to fix. The the wheels don't turn. I've had two of those. Various things like that, they're just, you know, you move them around.
Isn't that what they make rollaway jacks for?
Yeah.
Okay, so it so it is possible.
Well, yeah, it's possible if I would asphalt or or concrete it.
Okay, so you would be able to move those cars around. I mean, your statement before that you you wouldn't be able to, that's incorrect. You would be able to. You would just need to use the rollaway jack.
Couldn't economically do it. Yeah, I I would have to spend fifty grand to do it, and that's just effectively, you know, I I can't do that. I'm not a business.
Any questions, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question.
Yes, Director Hand?
This is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Urban Design. Mr. Ricketts, would you plan on storing inoperable vehicles on this lot?
To staging, it's a staging point for the car. To staging, it's a staging point for the cars I work, work on. Yes, they're inoperable. And I did see a comment on the, on a response about having the fence blocked. And that's not a problem, putting the little strips in the, it's a chain link fence. That can be, that can be shielded. That's no problem.
Using fabric or inserts is not allowed by code. You'd have to get a new fence with a complete screen.
What other, what other option is there?
Solid wood, metal paneling?
There's not a single solid wood metal paneling down there. It's all chain link with inserts. Actually, it's mostly chain link with no inserts.
Those lots storing inoperable vehicles?
Oh, yes, almost every one of them. You've got, you've got two salvage yards that have inoperable vehicles. Now, I will say the scrap iron place has had shielding, but you can see through it pretty much fifty-fifty. All the ones on First Street, I don't believe they have, I don't believe they have shielding. I'd have to look at my images again, actually.
Director Hand, any further comment?
Okay, here's half and half shielding.
No more questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Other questions for the applicant by commission members? Saying that, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak in favor of or in opposition? I have Shannon. Shannon, go ahead, please. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Shannon Clevenger, and the address is two eighteen North James Street.
Okay, and go ahead and give us your comment.
Okay, my, my question about this is we, our property is all the way around this property. And we do have, our fence is a metal fence, except for the gates and the very front corner of the property. And that's because we have semis going in and out, and we didn't want to block the view of tracks coming in and off James Street and causing possibly an accident. But the rest of the property is metal fence all the way around. And the second thing, question I had was what about access to his property? Because as of right now, there's no access off James Street into his property.
Okay, we'll get you an answer to that from the director. Access from James Street?
Yes, because my, our property goes all the way around behind his property because he says his property goes all the way to First Street, which it does not. His property goes back into our property, which is open right now. So his property doesn't go to First Street. First Street does run behind our property and between the scrap yard. But there's, the only reason there's traffic on it right now, because it dead ends at our property, is because the city or they're running sewer lines underneath the ground. And so they've got Ohio Street blocked while they're doing that project.
Okay. Any other questions that you need answered?
No, that was it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Connolly?
Yes, I'd like to ask her if First Street is asphalt or gravel.
Shannon, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. Can you, can you, can you answer that question? Is, I'm sorry, Commissioner Connolly, once again?
Is, is First Street asphalt or gravel?
It was, it's, it's partially asphalt, and then it turns into gravel. When you come down, when you come down into the asphalt or the scrap yard, that is asphalt. But over time, the asphalt has wore off and is, they have never re-asphalated. So it's now dirt and gravel. Same thing with Ohio, the corner of James and Ohio. It was asphalt, and it is to a certain point. And right now, they've got it dug up because, like I said, they're redoing the sewer. But it does turn it, you know, it was asphalt, and it's just over the wear and tear. It hasn't been maintained. It's turned into gravel there at the corner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Please raise your hand. Okay, saying none, we will close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand for his comments. And can you address the concern for the access off of James Street?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, urban design. Again, we're, we're here to meet about twenty-two North James Street. It is a variance for improved surface for a surface parking lot, which is required by the code. The applicant is seeking to maintain the existing gravel driveway, or excuse me, grebels. Excuse me, gravel lot. It is, will be, at least once it's adopted, be included in the Armored Dale area master plan. It is currently in the citywide master plan without an area plan. Again, right off James Street, you can see that the, the person from the public who is speaking owns the property that essentially surrounds it in an F-shaped parcel. And that gap too is right here. As you can see, and we showed some pictures of this earlier, and the applicant showed some additional pictures. I think very clearly part of the argument made by the applicant is the same argument that we would use, which is the reason why we have a requirement for improved surfaces and surface parking lots is that it doesn't, that that does prevent future tracking of gravel onto the sidewalk or whatever. The, the maps that located the ones show not the people who don't follow the code, but the people who have been grandfathered into the code. And every chance that we get, such as this, is our opportunity to bring these, these properties into compliance with our code. While context is very important, and we certainly understand that as the planning and urban design department, this is about requiring someone to update their property to meet the code requirements. And so staff recommends denial of this variance. If the board of zoning appeals wanted to move forward with proving said variance, we would do so under, with certain conditions for your consideration. One, that the property be fully fenced off, and as it is going to store inoperable vehicles, as per the code, it has to have a screened fence. Again, slats and, and fabric are not allowed by the code. So to bring this property up to code, which is what we're talking about in this case, that would be one of our conditions. Secondly, that if it were to maintain, if it was denied and were to maintain the gravel, that rumble strips, rumble strips be provided to prevent the tracking of that gravel into the public right of way. The applicant is still, one way or the other, have to submit a request, and will have to obtain a right-of-way access agreement and permit with the Public Works Department, not to dissimilar from a previous zoning case. Excuse me, board of zoning appeals case. And those are our conditions of approval. Staff recommends denial.
Those were your additional stipulations. Should a motion for approval be made, but your recommendation is for denial?
Correct.
Thank you. Questions for the director? Saying none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Ernst?
I move the Board of Zoning Appeals, deny case BOZA twenty-twenty-one day zero-one-nine as not being in compliance with city ordinances.
Thank you. Motion is for denial, made for the reasons stated by the maker. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on motion for denial, Commissioner Connolly?
Yeah, this question is for Gunnar. So since we've seen these other, I guess, parcels just not, that doesn't have asphalt, will we be giving them some kind of violation?
This is Gunnar Hand, urban design. We can go out there with our zoning enforcement and codes team and do a sweep of the neighborhood. If, if you see fit, we are constrained, as you know. And I have one zoning enforcement officer for the entire county. So can I guarantee we're going to get around to it? I got a laundry list of things that that guy's trying to do right now, so I can add to the list for sure. But again, most of these happen because it's part of the UG, quite frankly, that's kind of left over. Most people don't think that the other side of Kansas Avenue is in fact Kansas when it is. Good portion of it is in fact, and then namely, some of these are grandfathered in and just haven't ever been brought up to code. Again, our part of what we do here is try to bring things up to code as they come through with the required permits.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion for denial? Saying that, roll call.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Paulie?
Aye.
Chairman, that motion to deny this appeal as it is not in compliance with city ordinances, passes seven in favor and none opposed.
All right, thank you. That does conclude the Board of Zoning Appeals. I want to thank everyone in the audience tonight for their participation. Want to thank those of you that are waiting for the City Planning Commission meeting to start. We are, as you know, an hour and ten minutes behind our schedule. So we are going to take a five-minute recess, and then we will convene that meeting, and we'll get underway and hopefully move through that agenda very quickly.
Hello, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, hi, I got a, a notice here. I mean, this isn't the right meeting.
I have no idea what you're here for, ma'am. What, what, what notice you're talking about?
Department of Planning and Urban Design.
That's when we're getting ready to start, City Planning Commission. It's supposed to start at six-thirty. It's going to start in about five minutes.
All right.
All right, thank you all. Five-minute recess. Janet, are you ready?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am ready.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the August ninth meeting of the City Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Carson. I will be serving as chairman of tonight's meeting. Also, I want to introduce Karen Jones, who's serving as vice chair. Also, I want to thank you all for your patience as we got through a lengthy Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. Couple of quick introductions. Want to introduce Janet Parker, the executive assistant to the Department of Land Use and Urban Planning, and Gunnar Hand, who is the director of land use and urban planning, along with our legal counsel, Daniel Kuhn. And the following commissioners are present this evening. Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner James Connolly, Commissioner Susanna Pauli, Commissioner Mark Muller, Commissioner Brandy Armstrong, and our newest commissioner, Dr. Evelyn Hill. With that, I will turn the meeting over to Janet Parker, who will read the opening statement and a, give you a brief description on how the meeting is going to run tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before you, I start, I do have two things. Number one is that Mr. Connolly will not be joining us for the City Planning Commission meeting. So we will have seven members. It will take four to pass any motion. The second thing is that an item that was held over from last month's meeting for discussion, I inadvertently did not put on the agenda. It is a miscellaneous item concerning the discussion of planning commission voting procedures.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. Due to COVID- nineteen, the members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you are joining by Zoom video, please make sure you have an appropriate background and plan to stay visible during the meeting. Planning Commission members, use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone, and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you need to recuse or if you need a personal break, use the raise your hand feature. For those in attendance, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you have called in by telephone only, or if you are having trouble logging into the Zoom meeting, please email planninginfo@yco-kck.org as Secretary Parker is monitoring that email. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting. And anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens which review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations, and preliminary planned reviews on tonight's agenda. The Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. For final plaits and final plan reviews for tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final, and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given fifteen minutes to present their case. The fifteen minutes includes the applicant, consultants, and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. And those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time, and the Planning Commission may, by two-thirds majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five-minute increments. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will then be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the commission if question is directed to them. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Urban Planning and Land Use Department at planninginfo@yco-kck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission, or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at seven P M. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda, and items on the consent agenda are final plaits, final plans, or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission, or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all of the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda. And when I have completed the list, the chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the raise your hand feature, be recognized, and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff recommendation. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission agenda. For each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision. In addition, those who receive notices for this hearing will again receive them for the hearing on Thursday, August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Consideration of the July twelve, twenty-twenty-one, City Planning Commission Minutes. Special use permit S P twenty-twenty-one dash zero-six-one, Jeffrey E. Hollingshed. Renewal of a special use permit for live entertainment at twenty-oh-three-and-a-half to twenty-oh-five North Fifth Street. Plan review application P R twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one-four, Whitney Vinzant with Taco Republic. Final plan review for parking at five-hundred County Line Road. Plan review application P R twenty-twenty-one dash zero-two-three, Stacy Bowen with KMO Burger LLC. Final plan review for Whataburger Restaurant at one-zero-seven-eight-zero Parallel Parkway. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items?
No.
No. Thank you. Okay.
Please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August nine, twenty-twenty-one. The application under documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the publications in the echo for the special use permit, and the notices to property owners. The commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Thanks, Janet. Is there anyone on the commission that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda? Saying that, is there anyone in the audience that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda for special consideration this evening? Please raise your hand. Okay, saying none, I will now stand for a motion on the consent agenda. Chris or Jones?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? A second. Commissioner Armstrong. So, I'm sorry, I think I did hear from Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
So I've got a motion to approve by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Hill. Any discussion on the consent agenda approval? Saying that, roll call.
Armstrong. Ernst.
I.
Hill.
I.
Jones.
I.
Muller.
I.
Paulie.
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, sub with the staff conditions passes. Six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the special use permit will go before the Board of Commissioners on August the twenty-sixth at seven P M.
Thank you, Janet.
That does conclude the consent agenda, and we will now move on to the non-consent agenda. The first item to be heard is change of zone application, C O Z twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one-two. Ray L. Sawyer, changes zone from R one Single Family District to A G Agriculture District for horses at thirty-seven-twenty-six North Forty-seventh Terrace. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August nine, twenty-twenty-one. The application under documents, plans, pictures, and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind-up echo, and the notices to property owners. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sawyer, I've got you queued up to speak. If you'd go ahead and start off by giving us your name and address, please, for the record, and tell us about your project.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Ray Sawyer. The property address is thirty-seven-twenty-six North Forty-seventh Terrace. It was, it was set back for thirty days so that we could get a the conservation report done, as well as there was there was an open ticket on the on the property, and we could, we didn't know what the what the what situation was with that. I finally got to, about two weeks ago, I finally got a letter stating what it was. And we are working, trying to trying to get all the get get the the couple of things resolved. One of them was like move a move vehicle from off the grass onto the the driveway. And another was to get some debris down by the pond away where people have been doing some illegal dumping. I have, I've spoken with Harvey Brothers Trucking, and they're supposed to be coming to remove the debris. But the conservation office, I contacted them, and I spoke with a young lady, and she's supposed to be getting back with me. But I take it they're backed up because I haven't heard back. However, I'm still, to make the long story short, I'm still kind of at the same point I was at last month. When we, you know, so I think I I I think we probably need another continuance so that we can get these matters cleared up.
Okay, let me let me get a clarification. Gunner, have we done what, one continuance on this one already?
Correct.
Just as going to play urban design, there's been two continuances. This was held over in May for sixty days, and then again in July without the applicant for another thirty.
Because he was not at the last meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Alright, Mr. Sawyer, you've you've already had two, you've already had two holdovers. We have to deal with this case tonight.
Okay, here, wait a minute, hang on a second. You said that it was held over for sixty days.
That was from May until July, and then you did not appear at our July meeting, so we gave you another holdover because you failed to appear.
They, no, no, sir, they they told me.
No, actually, that is that is correct, sir. That is part of the record. That is correct.
Okay, listen, listen, I'm telling you what they told me. I'm not, I'm not trying to batter you.
Who's they?
That that they they said that.
Okay, let's talk about who is they, sir.
I'm sorry.
Who is they?
The well, I'd have to pull his name back up.
Why? Can you tell me what department they worked in?
Yes, sir, give me just a second. And he gave me a the, give me just a second. I'll try to pull this information up. The the if I'm not mistaken, it was Mr. Farley that I spoke with, and he stated that we were going to continue it because they wanted to get a conservation report.
That is correct. That's the reason we continued it, and that's the reason we continued it in May. And then then you did not show up for the July meeting, and we gave you one more continuance.
They in the first meeting, they said they wanted to refer over to the conservation and that there was an open ticket on from the city. And I told them that I didn't know anything about open ticket, and we were trying to get in touch with the conservation office to get a conservation report done. Since then, I've followed them, and I spoke with the young lady there, and she hasn't, we haven't gotten a conservation deal. I mean, that's not, I'm open and ready to to have it done, but I can't make her schedule, sir.
Okay, but we've given you ninety days, so I'm going to go ahead and go to the secretary to find out and to find out what what situation. Secretary Parker, can you go ahead and give us an update?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just give a point of clarification on the hearings. This was heard on May the tenth. It was sent to the Board of Commissioners with a recommendation of approval. At the May twenty-seventh meeting, it was referred back to the Planning Commission so the applicant could get with the Conservation District and get a conservation plan in place. At the June fourteenth meeting and the July twelfth meeting, it was held over for the same reason.
Okay, and was Mr. Sawyer at the June meeting or the July meeting?
Let me check. The, he was at the May meeting. And at the, he was at the June meeting.
And so it was discussed at that time that we needed a conservation plan, correct?
That is correct. He was not at the July meeting, but I do believe that he was at the Board of Commissioners meeting on May the twenty-seventh.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Sawyer, did you hear the information that was provided? Mr. Sawyer, you need to unmute yourself again. Mr. Sawyer?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Did you get the information from Ms. Parker that you, we had originally sent it off for approval, and it was referred back to us by the Board of Commissioners? In June, you appeared at that meeting, and we held it over for the conservation plan. In July, you did not appear at that meeting, but you did appear at the Board of Commissioners meeting, and here we are tonight.
Well, yes, yes, that is true. We, the the last meeting, the only meeting that I missed, it was there on my behalf. And I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't get in, so I mean, that I wasn't there, bottom line, at the but, correct, we were supposed to be doing a conservation.
And when did you, when did you contact the Conservation Department?
I don't know the exact date. I called, let me, let me go back into my records here because I I had asked Mr. Farley, I contacted Mr. Farley via email and asked him what was the, what was the number for me to call her directly? And with his email, hold on one second here. Let me pull this up. Okay, Mr. Farley replied to me. Mr. Okay, thank you. Mr. Farley returned, replied to me on no, that was the last one that he spoke with me on. He sent me a text. I mean, a email prior to that, and gave me her number. Oh, right here. He gave me that on June the twenty-fifth, just when I received her number.
Okay, at this point, we don't have a conservation plan. We cannot deal with this case, and we cannot approve this case without a conservation plan. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to go ahead and go to Director Hand. I just need some some guidance here. Director Hand, can you tell me where we're at on this situation? We've already had two holdovers, and where are we with this? And how do we move this along or dispense of this this evening?
Is Director Hand Director Plan Urban Design with the clarification from Ms. Parker. It sounds like we've continued it for sixty days. Technically, with code does allow us to continue it for ninety days. We could give him another thirty days. Our conversations with the Conservation District were a little different than Mr. Sawyer explained it. But if he is willing to let the Conservation District onto his property so they can properly assess the number of horses that are appropriate, we we are okay with that.
Alright, thank you. I'm going to go to the public portion of me. Is there anyone in the audience that came that came this evening to speak? to speak in favor of or in opposition of this request, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing that, are there any questions from the Commissioner of the, of the applicant? Before we look at possibly doing another holdover, alright, Gunner, do you have any recommendations?
Um, staff would be willing to hold over for another thirty days, that would be, again, be the final holdover and if without the conservation plan.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sawyer, are you there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, are, are, are you willing to, uh, are, are you gonna request a, a thirty day holdover?
Yes, sir.
Okay, here's the, here's the deal, this is your last one. You come back in September and you don't have the conservation plan, this case will be dealt with. Okay, so the Conservation District is gonna have to have access to your property, they're gonna have to go onto that property and to be able to provide that plan, if they're not allowed to do that, there is no more discussion, there's no more emails from you and Mr. Farley, no more text messages. September, we dispense with your case, is that cor- is that, is that clear, perfectly clear?
It's perfectly clear.
Okay, then that's what, that's what I expect to happen, okay, can I get a motion for a holdover, please, for thirty days on this case?
Motion to hold over.
Yeah, I have a motion to hold over by Commissioner Polly, do I have a second, is that Commissioner Jones's second?
Yes, I'll second.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Ernst's discussion?
Uh, no, sir, I was in the mix again, but not quick enough.
Alright, thank you, okay, motion is for holdover for thirty days, uh, any discussion, seeing none, roll call, please.
Armstrong?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Polly?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to hold over this change of zone until the September thirteenth meeting for the conservation plan to be in place passes, six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer, you've got until September to get this case rectified, I'm gonna hold you to your word or I will, I will keep my word, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have two items that we're gonna hear together and then we will vote on them separately. Change of zone application, COZ twenty twenty one dash zero two two. Curtis Peterson with Pulsonelli, change of zone from AG Agriculture District to CP three planned commercial district for construction of Camping World at twelve oh one North Ninety Eighth Street. And plant twenty twenty one dash zero one four preliminary plant for one commercial lot at twelve oh one North Ninety Eighth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopting master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August ninth, twenty twenty one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in further into the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the Wyandotte Echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case? No. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Peterson? You are on.
Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good.
Still with us?
I am, I'm ready if you're ready.
Please go ahead.
Kurt Peterson, nine hundred West Forty Eighth Place, Kansas City, Missouri, here on behalf of the applicant. Permission to share screen?
Yes.
I am one step ahead of you, I already got you set.
And you even knew what I was sharing? Oh, I see, thank you, Janet. So you can see this, the slide in front of you now, Mr. Chairman, correct?
Not yet.
Okay, that's why we asked. Now we got it.
There we go.
Thanks, sir. So what's in front of the Planning Commission tonight is a preliminary development plan and a preliminary plat related to the Camping World project. The first slide, as a reminder, some of you, um, have seen this recently. But this is the twelve acre site again, next to Menards in Western Wyandotte County. With State Avenue and I four thirty five is the major, the most major approximate, approximate intersection. The site plan, which you see before you, which has colored in all the shrubbery perimeter landscaping and, uh, landscape islands, so that you can see those popping out, again, this is a thirty eighth, approximately thirty eight thousand square foot Camping World RV dealership, which has both retail sales and uh, service functions on the recreational vehicles. As just conveyed a bit ago, uh, to the BZA, this is a long sought after business with national prominence, with quality, high average wage jobs, lots of consumers, and I will say fans uh, across the country and in the metro and thus a lot of potential sales for the county. In terms of walking through a quick overview of the site that's on the screen in front of you. The first is to get context because we're zoomed way in, you have Ninety Eighth Street that curves around here, ultimately goes down to State Avenue. You have our neighbor, which is Menards, this is the side of Menards, it's a, uh, there's a fence here. And it's leading back to this area, which is their lumberyard and back of house, so that is our neighbor there. We have, uh, site circulation at two points to the adjacent streets to the public street, we have a ride and ride out on the screen in front of you on Ninety Eighth Street, that's an island, which is why that's a ride in and ride out. We have our, uh, main access point, which is coming here to the full access point of this private drive that exists today. Which was formerly part of the Schlitterrod Project, now part of the Greater Home Field Master Development. So folks come in and out here for full access and turn into the Camping World site here. There is important fencing associated with this site for functional, uh, insecurity reasons. The cursor will show you where the fencing is, there's fencing in this area. That then goes around and the site is also fenced in this area. And what that does is it creates a secure area for RV storage. So everything above the cursor here and around the building, down to Ninety Eighth and back around, and then there's a gate here and then a gate there, all of that is for the extensive, uh, RV inventory for the site and then outside the fence, so unfenced would be this area down. There's that access point again, along the building, along the front door and down around to the ride and ride out, all of this area is unfenced and available for circulation by the public and by employees. The main entry is facing Ninety Eighth Street directly here, you can see it on the south facade and then also on this eastern facade. The service base for the service component of this project is, call it, two thirds or so. The southern two thirds or so right here. And then the retail portion is the southern approximately one third. Again, makes sense with that main access point, the entry doors for the RVs are six in number on each side, so six on the west side here and six on the east side. All the required landscaping under the commercial design guidelines have, have been met except for, uh, a BZA variance that was provided earlier tonight, which said in this area that's gonna be absolutely stocked to the gills with these big expensive RVs on this area. That because we functionally couldn't have the islands there. That all of the landscaping that otherwise would be required in this area has been redistributed to bulk up the landscaping and screening on the perimeter, particularly in the north and to the east here. Finally, customer parking and employee parking is in the unfenced area that identified before where the cursor is outlining here. Including customers that bring in RVs in this area and then employees and customers that park in the normal car size parking spaces down here. So that is a brief overview of the proposed project. One of the main orders of business tonight, as you review this application, are the four deviation requests. And I'll go through those now. First, there's a requirement in the design guidelines that if you have more than eighty percent of your customer employee parking, so we're talking about this area, it is not relevant to the RV RV storage lot here, the inventory lot, I should call it. So it's just talking about this area here, if more than eighty percent of that parking is in front of the development. Then the landscape islands in that area, which you can see the landscape islands here, here, here and here, and then all the landscaping on the entry points and the perimeter, so all of that, um, is present. If, then, if you don't, if eighty percent or more of the parking is in front of the building, then you have to double your landscape islands in that, uh, customer parking lot. So we have met the, the basic, the hundred percent requirement, we have not gone to the two hundred percent requirement. And that's where our request for the deviation is, is just that, and here's the reasons why. First, there's two access that are building and parking locations, so the building location here and then the inventory location here and the parking here. What, we probably went through a, a dozen or more variations of where to put this building and how to fit all these pieces together or, or mix the ingredients to bake the cake, uh, a lot, and we shared some of that with professional staff as they ask about the building location and circulation. And here's what we were stuck with that explains, um, why, why we're asking for this first of four deviations. We have some points that are, uh, immovable, that is, this access point exists today, all this. And so this access point needs to be here, Ninety Eighth Street exists. And so we, we have to access Ninety Eighth Street in an appropriate spot like here, so those are, those are fixed points and we need our consumers that come in to be able to circulate through those access points, we can't have them interfere with, with the gated area. Which brings up the RV lot, we have to, for security reasons, have that gated and fenced. Another kind of fixed point is we need sufficient RV storage parking to meet the business plan, so we have to fit in all these RVs here. And we have to have sufficient customer parking and employee parking down here. Finally, we need circulation around the building for, uh, reasons that have to do with the size of these recreational vehicles, we have to be able to circular, circulate around the building. So from an aesthetic perspective, which is what really the, this off-street parking, they call it, requirement of doubling your, your islands over here is, is going for. We really think we show suffi- sufficient perimeter landscaping and, and, and customer islands here and parking all in here, so that anybody that's looking at this view corridor is seeing all of the islands we've put up front and here and all this perimeter shrubbery and street trees. From a functional standpoint, we really, uh, absolutely do not want to lose another, another stall. Um, and it'd be a number of stalls, double the requirement here in this area, we really want it, we think this is the right amount of parking, which was actually an important point. The exact amount of parking approved by BZA as part of that first deviation just a little bit ago. So that's deviation request number one, we really think we're meeting the spirit of making sure it's aesthetically pleasing in this parking area while meeting all of our functional requirements. The second deviation requirement has to do with building elevation architecture. So the design guidelines obviously require certain materiality. The proposed plan, and I'll put the elevation up here, there's two elevation sheets. The, these are the same that, that were in your packet with one exception. So we really went out of our way to try to create really the most, uh, dressed up and well-appointed, if you will, a Camping World building that literally ever has been built by Camping World, kind of ground up in the country. And we've been, kept going back to Camping World, back to Camping World to, to produce what we're gonna show you tonight. All going to materiality and overall aesthetics for the, this particular site. The first is looking at the, um, the southern elevation, which you remember is that main entry point, we have a masonry tow- tower element there that is, is a nice feature and we did the same thing on the back, on the north side. So that, in this case, it's here and on the next sheet, it's, shows down here on the backside, so we have a masonry tower, tower element. We have stacked stone column, columns and some column wraps with, also with the same sort of stone. We have CMU, we have decorative metal bands, we're appropriate. And here's something I really wanted to call out, in working with, um, Michael and Gunner and going back and forth on what can we do here and going back and forth with Camping World. We really decided that because of the view corridor, that is, I mean, RVs here, huge, you guys know the size of these RVs, this is gonna be covered with RVs, there will be no view corridor back this direction to the building, literally not. Um, uh, same here, this is Menards back of house, right, their lumberyard, there's a fence, there's nothing to see here. Same here, there's much distance between this and the future, uh, Home Field Master Development. And then over here, this is our entry point and someone that's coming this direction to the west on Ninety Eighth, if you're coming from state, going west, come up around. You will have a view corridor here because this is regular parts, right? But we went through already, I won't belabor it, there's a lot of landscaping here, both in the islands and along the perimeter. But we sat there with, with Gunner and Michael and said, okay, what could we do in the retail portion of the facade here before we get to the bays, right, which you can only do so much with? And we went in and added, I'm gonna show you this, zoomed in on the elevations now. And working with staff, we went in and added spandrel glass all along here, this is the east facade you're looking at and it's the southern third of it, that's the retail area. And we really think that, that, that was a great point by staff and it, it, I'm really glad Camping World a- agreed to it, because again, that is the one other area besides the south facade here that, that you really have any sort of view angle to. So, really honestly, without exaggerating here on Camping World, this really will be the, uh, the the, the nicest Camping World store in, in the system that's been ground up, constructed and we're really proud of it, i- they believe in quality built buildings, because they want them to last for a really long time. And they also need them to be extraordinarily functional. But they, they don't want to do things that are not seen or that go over the top. Because honestly, it takes away from what they're known for, which is really pumping their dollars into extraordinary employees that we talked about before, which is why they get, uh, above average wages for the industry. That's number two, number three of four is building undulation. So the design guidelines talk about asking for every, uh, certain distance to actually, uh, you know, push the building in and out, right, undulate it. And our team, while we looked at that, came up with a different approach, because the whole idea, there's articulation, right? The whole idea is to articulate the building. So when it comes to those tower elements on the north and south side, the large canopies that we have on the south side and along the west side. The height change, as you move from this retail area, we move to a higher, uh, building here, so there's a step up in the building, which creates other articulation that really, uh, changes things up as you view the building from the southwest. We, we really tried to, again, for this site, for where people can see the building, we tried to make those sort of adjustments, articulation so that the building doesn't look monolithic and we think we satisfied that without having to go the path of trying to undulate this building, so that's the third deviation of four is asking, um, for, uh, an exception from the specific undulation, the design guidelines. Lastly, the fourth, uh, request for deviation is the idea of pushing the building even closer to Ninety Eighth Street, so the design guidelines in general wants to see the building up against or very near the right of way. The first observation I have here is kind of refer, I won't repeat it all, but the first item we talked about just a minute ago, under the location of off-street parking, the eighty percent, right? But no more than eighty percent of your parking up front of the building. So as I said before, insert all of that about circulation and access points and how we really tried, we took staff's uh, suggested building design, which was to push this up a little bit closer to Ninety Eighth and we literally functionally couldn't make it work and we shared all that with staff in detail. But, when it comes to this, I think it's important to look at the bigger context. This building will not be perceived from this view corridor, which is the way you can see it, as far from Ninety Eighth Street. And again, I, I think you can just look at this and probably come to that same conclusion, it's literally what, three parking uh, stalls worth of, uh, strips of stalls there away from the front door of the building, which has some height, which draws you in, so I really don't think it's far, but really just for comparison and not to say that not to make too much of this, but I do think this provides good context. The only neighbors here on Ninety Eighth Street, which is Menards and Dairy Farmers of America. This distance here to the right of way, our building is a hundred, approximately a hundred and fifty feet from Ninety Eighth. Our neighbors are between Menards ranges, because it's a slanted building, as you can see here, but ranges from, we're a hundred and fifty, Menards is a hundred and ninety five to three hundred and seventy five feet from their front facade, so much farther than we are proposing. And then Dairy Farmers America, remember, we're one fifty, is between two hundred and eighty five and three hundred and sixty five feet away, so the point is, again, not to put too much stock in that, but to say, we're certainly not out of character for the neighborhood and we have pushed this up darn far where this feels like this front door is really close to Ninety Eighth. That's the fourth and final request for deviation, so before resting and answering any questions the commission might have, wanted to touch on stipulations, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peterson, I hate to interrupt you, but you have one minute left and you can request an additional five minutes from the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I will not need barely more than the one minute, we just have these two slides on the stipulations, if, if I could request the five minute extension, so we don't get interrupted.
Okay, yes, we've got a request for a five minute extension or up to a five minute extension. Uh, can we get a vote on that, all those? Can we get a vote on that? All those, I'm sorry, Janet, do you want to take a roll call? Is that what you do?
Uh, no, but I would like to have a motion in a second and then we can take a voice.
All right, we have a motion and a second to extend the speaker's time by up to five minutes. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to extend for five minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hill. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any any opposed? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Chairman. So the final topic is stipulations. We're in vast agreement with staff when it comes to the stipulations. Um, under, I'm going to say it, it's going to be identical, but I'll say it in two ways for the record. With respect to the first application, which is the preliminary development plan, we agree with stipulations one through four. And stipulation seven through fourteen, which is on the screen in front of you. The only two stipulations to briefly address are five and six. With respect to stipulation five, stipulation five talks about, and I'm going to go off the screen for a second to go to the. Aerial so we can get context. Talks about a little sliver of sidewalk down here. This is ninety A Street as it meets State Avenue. And this is the UG-owned fire station. So there's a little strip of land owned by the master developer of the Home Field project. And the request, the stipulation, I should say, would say that there'd be a segment of sidewalk put in right here. So on its face, you'd think, how in the world are we spending commissions' time even talking about a very, very, very short little sliver of sidewalk here? And the answer is, in normal course, we wouldn't because Camping World would say, okay, that has nothing to do with our project. But we plan to be in this town for a long time and we're a community player. We we can do that. But the problem is, as our engineers. Looked into this location, what that sidewalk would entail due to existing grades. It it's not minor. There's actually a buried fiber and an elevation change that would literally make you take fiber that's buried along State Avenue. And as you know, you can't move whatever, ten feet of fiber. Literally would make you deal with fiber all the way till you have a point where you could actually relocate, you know, trajectory of fiber, et cetera. So this is one of those things humbly, respectfully, Camping World, and we even told staff this before we understood the engineering here, said. Okay, nothing to do with our project, but if that's if that's something that would help, we could probably do it. We just can't. Mr. Chairman and commissioners, given the, it's a whole nother ball of wax that we didn't know until our civil engineers looked into it. So our request. With stipulation five is that you would delete it in this instance from the Camping World application. I imagine there's other instances where that could come up. With future development of others. The other stipulation is six, and we would ask that you delete reference to that. I'm sorry, delete that. I'm going to go back. Thank you. Go back to the screen. So we just talked about this. The second request is deletion of stipulation number six. I can go into it, but in working with staff, they agree that's duplicative of the stipulation that followed and potentially a little bit confusing. As there is no revised landscape plan. So staff and we agree that, and and they'll speak for themselves, of course, that stipulation number seven will be deleted. Finally, on the plat, all it is is different numbering. So I'll say it for the record. It's the same two issues. We agree with stipulations one through five. And eight through thirteen. On stipulation six, that's the conversation we just had under the PDP, which is stipulation five about the sidewalks. We would ask that that be deleted for the same reasons. And then stipulation seven, which was stipulation six for the PDP, we would ask be deleted. And that's the one that staff agrees that it references the. The revised landscape plan that will will not exist. So with that, we would ask Mr. Chairman and Commissioners for your support tonight for the PDP and the preliminary plat. Um, with the changes, including the granting the four deviations requested for the reasons said. And then also these tweaks to the stipulations for both applications. We stand open for any questions you might have. Thanks for your time. And thanks for the additional time.
Great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? He was that thorough. Okay. We will go ahead and open up the public portion of the meeting. Anyone in the audience that came tonight to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Hand for his comment.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gerner, Director of Planning and Urban Design. I will keep it brief as Mr. Peterson did a pretty thorough review. The short of it for us is we did a significant amount of back and forth with the applicant. We believe that we came to the best of of project possible. They do still require um, the deviations from the planning commission. Um, we put a lot of our emphasis on screening sort of outside of that fence um, to meet the intent of the code. Uh, and the master plan. We think that the applicant has done that. Um, we agree with all of the stipulations being removed as Mr. Peterson knows that we will be coming for that sidewalk from Home Field in the future.
Okay, questions for the, questions for the director? Okay, I'm going to go to Janet. I'm going to need two motions, correct? Change of zone and.
That's correct. And we'll take the change of zone first.
Correct. Okay, uh, any questions for the director? Seeing that, I will stand for a motion on the change of zone.
Motion to approve the change of zone subject to staff comments and stipulations.
Motion has been made to uh, prove the change of zone. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Hill. Any discussion on change of zone approval?
Is that with the two cutouts? That were requested by the petitioner.
Commissioner Jones, is that with the added staff stipulations?
Gunnar, and I understand you were good with with the back and forth.
This is Gerner for Planner and Design. Yes, as I understand it, the motion would cover both the deletion of the. Technically four conditions. There are two, one for each of the, well, this is the changes on. So it's just the two conditions in the change of zone. This change of zone should also reflect the acceptance of the planning commission of the requests to deviations from the commercial design guidelines as well.
But let me can, you were in support of that, right, Gunnar?
In support of both, yes.
Okay, yes.
So your motion is all encompassing of the director's comments and the and the deletions that were requested.
Correct.
All right, Commissioner Hill, and your second is okay with that? All right, thank you. Discussion on motion to approve change of zone. Commissioner Ernst, you okay with what we've come up with?
Yes, indeed.
Okay. A discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Holly.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this change of zone application. Subject to the revised conditions passes six in favor and none opposed.
Okay, thank you. And I will need a uh, motion on the preliminary class.
Motion to approve the preliminary plat subject to staff comments and stipulations.
Thank you. Motion to approve made by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion on motion to approve the preliminary class such to additional staff stipulations? Saying that, roll call, please.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Holly.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the plat subject to the revised conditions passed the six in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Both of these cases will be heard again on August twenty-sixth at seven PM before the board of commissioners. And I appreciate the work that you and your clients have done with the staff to to bring us such a great project.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is change of zone COZ twenty twenty-one dash zero two three. Olive LLC. Change of zone from R one, single family and C one limited business districts. To CP two, planned general business district for a proposed gas station and convenience store at eighty-nine nineteen Leavenworth Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated August ninth, twenty twenty-one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind-up echo and the notices to property owners. Does anyone on the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for Ahmed. Almar, Amalvo?
Actually, it would be Chris Woods. I'm the architect.
All right, I I'm sorry, Chris, can you give your last name? All I see is Chris on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Chris Woods, W O O D S with.
And your address, please.
Eight five zero nine West one forty-fifth Terrace, Overland Park, Kansas.
Okay, go ahead and tell us about this project, please.
All right, so we are proposing a zone change of C one uh, and. A portion of R one to CP uh, two. Uh, from advisement from um, staff uh, via pre-application meeting and a few meetings back and forth emails. Um, we are proposing a thirty-four hundred square foot convenience store with a four pump location. I guess technically eight pumps, we call them dispensers. So essentially a car stall. Uh, gas canopy um, with uh, fifteen, a proposed fifteen um, new parking spaces. This would replace an existing thirty-eight hundred square foot restaurant bar. I think the last iteration was a uh. A home goods store of some sort um, that I believe had twenty, let's see here, third, up to thirty-four parking spaces. At one time. Um, we're asking for the zone change mainly to uh, increase the size of the lot, the back. Uh, third portion is the R one. That's where we would actually be placing the convenience store itself. Uh, of course, we would adhere to the foresight architecture. We would cover all mechanical equipment and we would uh, work with. Um, uh, planning and building to make sure we adhere to all the uh, necessary. Uh, elevation requirements such as awnings and entries and side entries and access to the sidewalk along eighty-ninth. Um, as well as materiality. Um, we are asking for a deviation from the overall design guidelines. Primarily because they would be requesting the convenience store portion of the project to be up. Uh, and on the north property line towards Leavenworth. Uh, due to the topography of the site, it drops significantly as you go south down eighty-ninth Street Terrace. Uh, up to about twenty feet. Um, the building would be. Uh, behind the building as we are proposing it is about a ten-foot drop. Uh, to allow vehicular circulation and garbage truck entry and exit deliveries and tanker truck. Uh, roundabout, uh, around the canopy delivery. Uh, we worked with um, planning and and explained to them that this is. Uh, this is the layout that we can work with um, to to make the project happen. Um, we tried different iterations. Uh, we were unable to place the building anywhere else. Um, we are not proposing any lighting on the southern side of the building or the eastern side of the building. The existing structure is is. Up tightly against the east property line. We will remove that structure. Um, all lighting will be faced down and we would provide uh, screen walls on all. Three sides of the property, the south, the east and the north uh, with a masonry screen wall. Along Leavenworth to um, uh, prevent any sort of headlight. Uh, glare toward the north. And then we would provide a. Architectural screen fence um, along the eastern property line to also avoid any sort of glare. Uh, toward the east. Um, and then finally, I I would like to just mention that the owner wants to work. Uh, with uh, planning, with building department, with the community. Uh, he is prepared to add. Uh, abundance of landscape, more walls, fencing, screen walls. Um, his proposal is to have more of a market-type convenience store. He does not like to sell alcohol. He does not like to focus on tobacco sales. He primarily likes to provide food uh, with the kitchen, um, like fried chicken, pizza. That kind of thing, uh, coffee and donuts in the morning. And and he also would would like us to communicate with the the community that. Um, he would provide a um, a request with the fuel delivery. Um, apparatus to to only conduct at a certain time a day that we can request. So let's say if if the community would prefer the refueling of the tanks to be mid-afternoon, we will request that and work with. The fuel provider to do so. Um, we would provide sidewalks along, brand-new sidewalks along eighty-ninth Street Terrace and Leavenworth. We would provide. A connection from that to the building itself. Um, so there's uh, a a walking aspect to the project. Uh, we do have some uh, water retention that we need to uh, to take care of in the in the back. So that area is left. Blank. And like I said, the southern portion of the building, the eastern portion of the building, no proposed lighting, no windows. Um, it would be uh, articulated through um, our architectural uh. Jogs, if you will, and variation in in roof heights uh, and different materiality to can to. Uh, maintain that foresighted architecture. And like I said. Um, very motivated owner would would like to provide what is necessary to buffer or screen. Whatever concerns of light or noise that the that the neighborhood uh, may may be concerned with. Um, and then finally, uh, to the west of this property is also a commercial C one property. I'm not sure if. Anybody's planning to do anything with that. I do know that our civil engineer has had communication with. Um, uh, the owner to the south about future residential uh, projects. Um, and by by request, we would be uh, resurfacing all of uh. The the southern portion of eighty-ninth Street Terrace to all the way to our southern property line. So. That would be brought up to a to a higher quality. Um, and again, uh, we appreciate all your time and effort, appreciate your time tonight. And if you have any questions, I'm I'm ready.
Good, great, thank you. Any questions for the applicants represented tonight? I'm not seeing anyone, so we're going to go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight? Please raise your hand. First one on my list is Mr. Anthony Wilson. Mr. Wilson, I've got you queued up, ready to speak. So go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your name and address, please, for the record. I need you to unmute first.
I'm Anthony Wilson. I live at thirty-three-two North eighty-ninth Street. And this gas station, my north fence will be even with the pumps and my south fence will be even with the building. I'm wanting to know what's this going to do with depreciation of my house? What's it going to do to my taxes? And I've got twenty-four foot, four, twenty-four foot pool in my backyard. So how am I going to have privacy for that? And one of my big questions is, is how are we going to get police protection in the neighborhood? When they can't even throw down the speeders on Leavenworth?
Mr. Wilson, unfortunately, you've asked four or five questions that I don't believe that anybody on this call tonight can answer those questions. So I certainly can't. Answer any questions about your property values, about uh, the police department stopping speeders down the the road. Uh, do you have something that I can ask the developer that they can uh, get you an answer for or something of the?
Bus stop and a Kansas City bus stop right outside, right on the corner eighty-ninth and. Leavenworth Road. So I'm just wondering how we're going to handle. Handle that with the kids.
How are we going to handle the bus stop in in relationship to?
How are we going to protect the kids? They get on and off the bus there.
Okay, are they being, uh, uh, in front of this, in front of this uh, development currently?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll get you an answer to that. What else can I help you with?
That's about it.
Okay, well, we'll see if we can get you an answer on the bus stop question. Thank you. And I'm going to go to, um, I believe it's Buddy, B U D D E. Go ahead, please unmute yourself. Give us your full name and address, please. Are you able to hear me? I am now, yes.
Okay, Jeremy Buddy.
Okay, Jeremy Buddy, I'm at eighty eight thirty three Leavenworth Road, and I also represent thirty thirty three North eighty ninth Street. I just want to make sure, is this the correct venue for voicing opposition? I have no direct questions for the planner. We just, as the neighborhood, wanted to know if this is the right place to make our objections for this business.
Yes, go ahead, please.
There is a safety risk concern. I don't know if you guys are all familiar with the, how Leavenworth Road is, but where they're proposing to put this business is right on a hill, especially during inclement weather. There's a significant amount of car accidents that happen there because of snow removal and ice and stuff. So I see a heightened risk for car accidents. Also, you know, the additional traffic on the road for that particular location, you can't be seen. Especially from, you know, traffic does move through here pretty good. They take that stop sign as a pull position and go rather quickly down the road. It also, to us, it almost makes no sense. There's no other commercial business surrounding this area where they're proposing to put this gas station. The next closest gas station is more than a mile up the road at four thirty five and Leavenworth Road, and that is more of a commercial type location where something like this would be more beneficial. This is right smack dab in the middle of a residential area with no other businesses around it.
Okay, so you're opposed basically due to due to the traffic. And you want some questions answered regarding the traffic study and what they're what they're saying about the the location with regard to the hill and where it's located, correct?
Yes.
Okay, as to the viability, I'm sorry, I can't answer that question that obviously the person building the stations would have done their own economic research as to that. So I'm afraid I can't answer your question with regard to why they're locating it, where they're locating it versus someplace else. But we'll certainly try to get you an answer on the traffic study.
An additional, quite another question. Is this gonna be a twenty four hour establishment and is this the only location that this person has for this type of business in Kansas City, Kansas?
Okay, we'll try to get you an answer on the hours of operation.
And can we also try to find out if he owns any other businesses like this?
If they have experience with this type of store, sure, we can certainly ask that. Thank you. Okay, I've got Ashley Hill.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi there.
Ashley Hilly. My address is thirty one thirty two East Townsend Court. So I am in the, we live in the subdivision that goes down the hill. At the top of the hill, so it's adjacent to. And I don't know if I can share a screen with you that shows the, or if you could pull up a map of it. I don't know if if you guys could do that, or if I could just share the screen that I have pulled up.
I think the director has a map of the area. Is there something specific you want to point out on that map? Make sure we got the right one?
Yes.
Let's let's go and see what we've got from the director and if that doesn't illustrate what you want to say, we can have you share your screen.
Thank you.
You see my map?
Yes.
Can we take the zoning off? So it's just an area?
Yes.
And can you point to where the proposed location is? There we go. Thank you. All right, so it's highlighted in yellow there, Ms. Hilly.
Yes, so just, you, as you can see, there are a load of houses that are that that line up directly beside it. You can see pools, several pools that would be affected, absolutely that whole area right there. And if they're proposing to move it back even further, it's gonna, it's gonna affect even more homes on that block. It's it's smack dab in the middle of a neighborhood where children wait at the bus stop at the corner of eighty ninth Street and Leavenworth Road. Nope, over on, yes, over there. So children and not only that, but pedestrians wait right there as well. And then if you're diagonal from there, so North eighty ninth Terrace, there's a huge pole there, and children also wait at the bus stop. So you're gonna go to your west. There's two houses there, yes, right there. Right there, there is another bus stop there as well. I have huge concerns for the safety of children as it as it is right now to get out of our street. So we live down North eighty ninth Terrace and around to Townsend Court. So that is a big hill coming up and down. So during inclement weather, especially, we have a hard time getting people even up and down that hill. I'm concerned that people are gonna turn in there thinking that they can get around faster or anything like that. I mean, it's a very, it's it's an in and out street. So you can't, you have to turn around. You can't go anywhere else. You have to come in our neighborhood to turn around. So I'm concerned with the amount of traffic that will be in our neighborhood and around the area. There are also tons of children out playing. So if it's gonna be a twenty four hour gas station, who's to say that that, or even, I mean, it doesn't matter how late it is. The the gas station on the corner of four thirty five and Leavenworth Road, as it is right now, closes at ten o'clock due to being robbed one too many times. And the same with the one at seventy seventh and Leavenworth Road. So we have two gas stations within less than a mi- or around a mile away from this area as it is right now. So for them to say that they my other concern is that he says he focuses mostly on food sales and things like that. He has a gas station down Leavenworth Road already at fifty fifth and Leavenworth Road, and he's, he sells pipes and other things at that in and out store as well. So I'm, I don't like the dishonesty coming from the architect saying that his, the client that he's representing is saying that he's focusing on food sales and things like that when, in fact, we know that that's not the case. There has been a murder at his gas station down Leavenworth Road. The other thing that I am concerned about is paraphernalia that comes in and out of there. So that that draws attention to, so if they're selling pipes, that draws attention to the area for selling other things such as drugs or things like that. It's just adds another level of concern to our neighborhood that we don't need to have. We already have enough trouble. You know, policing our neighborhood as it is, we don't need any more riffraff. And so, you know, the I I would like to know several things about that, like what what in all honesty is he really wanting to do here? What are the hours that he's wanting to operate, things like that? The proximity of children in the neighborhood in the area, if there was to be a shooting, there would be children in the crossfire. And that's the bottom line. I don't have anything else to say. I'm just disappointed that this even got far enough to get to being close enough to our neighborhood. It's in a neighborhood. It's not in, you wouldn't put this anywhere else in any other, in the middle of any other neighborhood. There is a perfectly good prime example of property on the corner of ninety ninth and Leavenworth Road that could be commercial property that used to be shampoo that burned down. That would be a perfect place to put something like this. Not in the middle of a neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hilly. We'll try to get you some answers, a couple of your questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Sandy M. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Give us your full name and address, please. Sandy M. One more time, Sandy M. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Thank you. I wasn't seeing the sign. Sandy McMillan, and I live at thirty two seventeen East Townsend Court. One of my biggest concerns is the traffic. As you know, we are right at the cusp of a hill and the four way stop and all the traffic going into the lake. As it is right now, it is very difficult with traffic coming up from like ninety first street on up to eighty ninth street. It's hard to pull out of eighty ninth court where we're pulling out or traffic coming into that area too. There's just a lot of traffic congestion already. And that is a huge concern of mine. And as my neighbors have said, we have a quiet little neighborhood, and that's what we like to keep it. I will just say, we we have lived here for twenty five years, and we had the tornado of two thousand and three, and we were unknown at that time of Townsend Court. Very few people knew where it was. After that, we started, after the tornado, we started getting more people aware of Townsend Court, and we had people coming around it. And we had a few little vehicle problems and things like that. So just don't like any more attention for Townsend Court.
Okay, anything else you'd like to bring up, Ms. McMillan?
No, that would be it.
And I I agree with you. Once the tornado came and cleaned out all the trees, all of a sudden we could see you.
Yep, that was a mess.
Okay, well, we'll try to get you some answers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Okay, Phyllis Moore. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please, Phyllis.
Okay.
Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Phyllis Moore. I live at thirty two thirty eight West Townsend Court. I was just listening to my neighbors, and I agree with the things that they have said. I would rather, I would not prefer to have a gas station up in that location due to the things that have just been mentioned. We already have two gas stations on either end of Leavenworth Road that are suffice and sell gas and sandwiches and other things. And there's also the quick trip that's up on that parallel. So there really doesn't seem to be a need to have another gas station right there. Other hazardous things, then I just agree with my neighbors.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and I've got James. I don't have a last name. I just have James.
Um, yes, my name is Bethany Vogel, and I have James Vogel with me. We live at eighty nine fifty one Leavenworth Road. We have many, I'm gonna just read my letter to you guys, and any anything that you have, I have cited it and have sent it to the people, to a guy named Byron Toy, so he will have all my references. And we have many concerns about this proposed plan. We already have several gas stations on Leavenworth Roads. Why do we need another one? Studies have shown living close to a gas station significantly reduces property values and increased crime rates, light pollution, traffic and noise. Health concerns. Numerous studies have shown the danger of having a gas station in such close proximity to homes proven harmful effects of lives in close to a gas station include but are not limited to the following: significant increased risk of child leukemia, elevated air pollution, increased enzymes emissions leading to cancer, anemia, increased susceptibility to infections, and low birth weight. A study in twenty fifteen researched the effects of hydrocarbons released during the storage and fueling of gasoline. The study reports that although portions of unburned fuels released into the environment is small, the accumulated effects are a public health concern. Particularly affected are residents of a nearby gas station who spend significant amount of times at a home as compared to those who live their, leave their homes for work because of the longer period of exposure. As everyone knows, we are living in a world right now where we are working, schooling, and staying at home as much as possible due to our current COVID pandemic. So this affects even more now. The proposed in and out convenience stores with fuel cells will place a gas tank within two hundred feet of residential homes, and normal gas station spills are estimated at more than fifteen thousand liters every decade. This admission spills will make their ways into neighboring residential properties and homes, and will have, will have health impacts on residents in places already. Property values. According to the C E D S, a convenience store near a gas station can lower the value of a nearby home. One of the most plausible effects is on mortgages. Federal Housing Administration insured mortgages are not available for properties located within three hundred feet of tanks capable of storing a thousand gallons or more of gasoline on or other inflammable explosive materials. Here are a handful of factors to be aware of when you're buying that could potentially impact its value in not a positive way. Busy streets with heavy car traffic are not great for real estate value. If you add gas station at the proposed location on Leavenworth Road, you will only be adding traffic noise to an already busy two lane street. Polluted areas. Gas stations definitely won't help improve your home values because they can generate and attract odors of other substance that could affect your air. These are all general rules to go by. Everything always comes down to the specific market, of course, that you're shopping in. I can assure you that no one is in the market to live two hundred to five hundred feet from a gas station convenience store that will add more traffic, increase lighting, possible crimes and air pollution twenty four hours a day. Safety. Gas stations bring safety concerns anywhere from robbery, shootings, car theft, selling drugs to explosions and fires. The reason for that is these stores are easily accessible, have large amounts of cash on hand, low security, few staff, and long operation hours, inflammable liquids. Convenience store robberies account for approximately six percent of all robberies known to the police. The following excerpt from another U.S. Department of Housing Urban Development document shows that while gas stations, fire explosions may not be common, they do occur often enough to be concerned for nearby residents. During the five year period of two thousand four to two thousand eight, estimates that U.S. Fire Departments responded to an average of five thousand twenty fires and serviced gas station properties each year. These fires caused an annual average of two civilian deaths, forty eight civilian fire injuries, and twenty million in direct property damage. Quality of life. Gas station brings extra traffic and lighting. We are a fairly quiet neighborhood. During the day, there's a good amount of traffic already on Leavenworth Road. It makes it challenging to turn out of Leavenworth Road from our home as well as the homes on Townsend Court. Changes in the zoning for eighty nine nineteen will increase the amount of traffic, light commotion in our neighborhood to all hours of the night, increase in increase the difficulty of getting out of our driveway.
Ma'am, you have one minute left.
Okay, I'm, I only need that minute. Eighty nine nineteen is currently zoned for C one limited business district. If you read the Y Coast City ordinance, it's due to it, they, the signs and the amount of noise and commotion created are assumed to be moderate, low, and scaled compared to regional shopping centers and highway oriented businesses. Clusters or citizens on major intersections are preferable to strip patterns. The current C one zoning for our residential areas and the change zoning will change our neighborhoods, and according to Wyandotte County ordinance and any other zone may as be, may be adverse to nearby residential properties. I ask that before you make a decision on this matter, you come to our homes, you visit with our neighbors, and you visualize for yourself how harmful this proposed gas station convenience store can be to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vogel. Okay, I now have Jessica Hamilton.
Hi, I just want to add and reiterate, my address is thirty two ten East Townsend Court. So I live in the circle as well. And after listening to everybody else speak, I don't really have a whole lot to add, but just want to make sure that I voice my dissent on adding this gas station and rezoning. I think it's a pretty horrible idea, especially as a mom of three children that are out there on a regular basis and the concerns that I have, as everybody else has already mentioned.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I have Arthur. Arthur, go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Give us your name. We can see you. Just need you to unmute yourself. There you go. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
I live at eighty nine ten Leavenworth Road.
I'm sorry, give me your name again, please, Arthur.
Arthur Verbeck.
Thank you.
I live at eighty nine ten Leavenworth Road. And I like to, I'm against it, in opposition to this. I like to, I like to applaud the statement just given by James and Bethany Vogel. I think it was a home run. She said a lot in that. I live directly across the street from this, this gas station. And I don't believe a word that the archi- that the architect said about stopping the lights from the building or the cars exiting. He didn't address the noise that's gonna come from that. He also didn't address the trash that's gonna come. He didn't address the noise that's gonna come from that. He also didn't address the trash that's gonna come from all that. I'm already picking up a ton of trash from the other two, uh, uh, gas station in Leavenworth Road. Just how many gas stations do we need on Leavenworth Road? Uh, there's one, uh, one minute west, a hundred-third of Leavenworth Road. There's one minute drive to the east at seventy-eighth and Leavenworth Road. We just don't need another gas station. And I wanna be the only one on Leavenworth Road that's gonna be directly across the street from a gas station. So I'm totally opposed to this. Uh, I think, uh, yeah, I, I, I've been here, I'm sixty-six years old, I'm retired and, uh, I lived here my whole life and I kinda like to say that way. I believe that's all I got right now.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, I've got Joanna Yabara. Joanna Yabara. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Joanna Yabara. One more time, Joanna Yabara. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call on Shannon Callahan. Shannon Callahan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, just fine. Thank you. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Sure, I'm Shannon Callahan. I'm at thirty-two twenty-four East Townsend Court. I'm one of the few on here that has the distinction of being able to say, I lived on this street as a child and moved away, came back and have my children on this street now. Um, they are older now. But as a child, this court, as Sandy said before the tornado, was a quiet neighborhood. Um, our parents loved having us here. Children ran the streets. We didn't have concern of traffic coming in and out constantly, tried to turn around. After this tornado happened, um, that all changed. And we get quite a bit of people coming down looking. We've had some issues. And it's sad because this is still a neighborhood where children run, children play. Um, Jessica lives next door to me. Her children are out constantly and I love hearing the sounds from the kids out in the neighborhood like when I was a kid on this street. And putting a gas station at the top of this hill is just a horrible idea. Not only are people gonna come down here to turn around if they miss the entrance and take a risk of hitting a child who's, you know, running and playing in the streets like I did. Um, but also people at the top of that hill in inclement weather, I can't tell you how many times I'm unable to get up the hill in a forerunner because people are crashed at the top of the hill. I had to sit last winter almost an hour before I could even turn into my street because somebody decided to come up the hill and gun it on the ice while somebody else came down and they collided. And it just backed up and we had a domino effect. So putting this gas station there where there's going to be more traffic is just going to make that even worse on the traffic there. Um, I agree with the lights. There's gonna be no way that the gentleman that lives right across is going to be kept from that. Um, and as a teacher in KCK, it's important that these children get to be able to go outside and have this time to be a kid. And if you put this there, we're gonna have to keep them in. We're gonna have to not allow them to be in this quiet neighborhood that people moved here for. So this is not a business area. This is a residential area that has been this way since I was born and it needs to stay that way. We stay here for a reason. I chose to come back to the court for a reason with my husband um, and live in the house that he grew up in that was replaced after the tornado when my mother-in-law passed away because it's such a good neighborhood. And I would hate to see anybody come in now and change the history and what this place stands for because people want to live here. And when I tell people I live on Townsend Court, I lived here as a child, they're like, oh, that's that cool court by the lake where kids run and play and people know it for what it's for. And I hope that the commission looks at this and understands why we're against this and would honor the people who have lived here all their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. Okay, and our, our last speaker is Joanna Yabara. We'll go ahead and try one more time.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that. I couldn't figure out how to unmute it earlier. I'm gonna keep it brief. Um, my name's Joanna Yabara. I'm here with my husband, Brian Yabara. We're at thirty-two thirty-seven East Townsend Court. Um, and I, we wanted to say that we are in opposition of the gas station. Um, I, I can't add anything that are, that my neighbors haven't already said, so I just wanna say that, um, everything they've said, we feel the same way. Um, and we're in strong opposition of the gas station.
All right, we've got you down as, uh, got you both down as opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Brandon Hilli. Mr. Hilli, we've heard from your wife. Do you have anything additional you wanna add?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so, uh, the proposed gas station sits on the top of Leaven, of, of the hill there. And on the north side is the big long, um, ditch that runs all the way toward, uh, Wyandotte County Lake and feeds in. So all the rainwater runs off there. So the potential EPA, huge catastrophic issues that could come about from any kind of leak or whatnot, um, could, could potentially ruin Wyandotte County Lake. That, that sits right, the, the proposed gas station sits at the end, at the top of that long um, valley there and that runs right into Leavenworth, or right into Wyandotte County Lake. So that's a huge concern.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you. Okay, I believe we've called on everybody that has asked to speak that hasn't already spoken before. Okay, I've got folks that have already spoken before, so I can't go back to you all. You had your, you had your moment to speak. So we're gonna go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go over to, uh, the, we'll go back to Mr. Woods to get some clarification of a few issues from the neighbors. Uh, would like for you to address, uh, the hours of operation. Mr. Woods of the store, can you talk to that?
Yes, uh, first and foremost, um, really appreciate, uh, everyone sharing their concerns. I think they're valid. I, I, uh, I sympathize. Um, and, and please know that, uh, it was never our intention to concern you as much as it sounds. Um, a- as a side note, the current zoning is C-one. Um, it is zoned for a gas station, um, except it would be just three, uh, three pumps allowed. And, um, so currently it is zoned for a gas station. Um, I, I completely understand the vantage point of this isn't a commercial area in your, in your regard. And, and please know I'm sympathetic to that, but currently it is zoned for a gas station. And I believe across, um, on the west side of Eighty-Ninth, it is as well if it is C-one. Uh, we were requesting the zone change, uh, so we could, um, push the building further south to allow for access for the pumps. Um, and, uh, working with planning, uh, in our pre-application meeting and along with, with other meetings, it was advised to go to CP two, uh, hence why we're here today. Um, I believe it currently is a commercial building. It's a retail store and it was at one point a, uh, a restaurant and bar. The operations then were, uh, till about eleven PM. Uh, my client, uh, is propos, would propose a six AM to eleven PM operating hours daily. And like I said, uh, refueling would, can be requested at a specific time of the day that would be best for, um, for everyone in the community. Going back to the concern about what is being sold and how this particular store is marketed to another store, I can't really talk about the, uh, marketing of the other store or the history of the other stores. I wasn't part of that store. Um, it's three and a half miles east. It's a different, uh, commercial area and I can, uh, get back to, uh, staff about what was being sold there. I can only share with what I've been given and with complete honesty that my client has told me he primarily wants to sell food and groceries and snacks at this location. Um, the Amazon distribution center is up the street and he primarily wants to sell, uh, snacks, coffee, um, and food to the, uh, various employees that will be at that Amazon distribution center. So to recap, six AM to eleven PM would be the hours. Um, and again, uh, uh, we apologize if we ever brought any concern to anybody in the neighborhood. Not our intention. It's zoned for a gas station. Our client purchased it. We were hired to lay it out the best we can and, um, and work with city planning to, uh, to accommodate any, any sort of foreseen concerns. One last side note, uh, our civil engineer and myself, we made ourselves available for over a week or for a week to discuss any concerns from, from the neighborhood. We sent out flyers. And, uh, I did not receive any phone calls and our civil engineer received two. So, um, I'm just a little surprised, um, you know, I would, I would have been much more aware of the concerns that, that everybody has and I do sympathize. Please know.
Okay, another question I have for you is, uh, as far as the lighting, uh, the type of lighting, uh, so as to, uh, eliminate as much of a disturbance as, as we can to the neighboring homeowners, can you describe the type of lighting that will be used?
Right. It would be, i- i- it would be face-down lighting, um, with zero, uh, outward projection. There would be no projected lighting, uh, of the fascia of the canopy. Um, the canopy would be, uh, one hundred percent face-down lighting. And, uh, to step back about and, and address the masonry screen wall, that's gonna be a four-foot-high masonry screen wall with landscaping. The, um, the screened fence, which would be solid, will be at least six feet, but my client would most would, would most likely wanna go higher i- to, to avoid any sort of sound and light that would come from, from, uh, uh, cars entering and exiting along with the required landscaping that is requested by, by zoning.
Okay, and can you also just comment briefly on the traffic study that was done with regard? There are a lot of discussion about the location of that building being on a hill and, uh, sightlines and, uh, things like that.
Uh, well, we were not requested to do a site, uh, to, to do a traffic study. Um, it is currently a, a, uh, retail store. It was once a restaurant bar. So it, I do not have the information nor were we requested to do a traffic study.
What about traffic counts in and out of your building? Do you, I mean, does the, um, does the owner, based on the location, that they have a account of what they thought they would do in the way of, of the number of cars coming in and out of that facility on a daily basis?
No, I, and I, I would not, I would not be able to guess at what his counts would be on that.
That's fine. Okay, I think you've answered the questions that at least I have. I will probably need to go to staff from there. Anything else you wanna add before we move on to staff comment?
Well, yeah, uh, you know, primarily the, the, there is a demand. I, I do understand and, and I I appreciate the concerns and the, um, the awareness of gas stations up and down Leavenworth Road. There is though a demand, so this isn't coming out of left field. The, the, the client would put a lot of money into this project for a reason. Um, like I said, it's currently zoned for a gas station, so whether or not he sells it on to the next person that, that, that wants it to become a gas station, um, it would just be a matter of, uh, do you, do you just put three or two pumps out there and, and have a gas, a, a small little shop? Um, or propose what we're doing, which is a, a higher-end convenience store um, with Amaco coming in and, and properly installing everything with, with, uh, all the checks and balances that you would typically have.
Okay, and one final question that I have, I, with regard to the, um, I guess, the other types of businesses that the store owner is going to have besides the Leavenworth, the other, the additional Leavenworth, uh, road location, are you aware of other stores that this, this developer has?
Yes, yes, he has. Yes, he, he primarily has convenience stores and gas stations. He has what you would kinda call it a partnership with Amaco um, in various cities throughout. Um, and, uh, yeah, again, to confirm, his store in and out, um, is about three and a half miles east of this location, uh, what would that be? Sixtieth and Leavenworth Road? So, yeah, he's, he's heavily involved in convenience stores and.
Operations, all right. All right, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go now to Director Hanfor. Is that, I'm sorry, any additional comments from the commission or questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to Director Hanfor's comment.
English Chair, this is Director Hanfor, playing urban design. I think, um, this is a couple of points of clarification. This parcel is what's what we call split zoning. Um, half of it is R-one, half of it is C-one. Because the applicant has requested more than what is allowed in C-one for the number of pumps, as was described a little earlier, recommendation would go to, uh, CP two for this change of zone. Um, this changes zone before it finishes its final development plan. One of the conditions is to come back for a master plan amendment. Um, so there will be another potential bite of the apple here, um, if you will, regardless. This is in the north midtown area. Again, we've been talking about it quite a bit. It's just outside of the Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan area um, located on this parcel. Um, it will, the plan does call for the development of the entire parcel. Staff has asked, uh, that they maintain as much of the existing tree stands on the site as possible. Um, existing trees provide a better buffer and screen than tearing everything down and starting, uh, starting all over. So there has been, uh, we did receive quite a bit of, um, opposition that you've heard, uh, tonight. We tried to mitigate those concerns with, um, working with the applicant to screen again the north, east and southern property boundaries. Additionally, we, um, required access off of Eighty-Ninth Terrace as opposed to Leavenworth to lessen the impact of direct access to on, um, Leavenworth Road. Um, Steph, Steph has gone through the commercial design guidelines. Because the restrictions on the site, the applicant, as a reminder, is requesting a deviation from your commercial design guidelines. And other than that one deviation, we believe that we've been able to work with the applicant um, to meet all the rest of the remaining guidelines in terms of pedestrian connectivity, um, articulation, um, and building elevations. Um, so with that, there were no letters of support. Um, there was quite a bit of opposition, which you heard tonight, um, both in letters and, and again, at this night's, tonight's evening, there are no NOVs in the property with all the conditions in the staff report. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, I just have one quick question going back to traffic study. Anything done on that that we need to know about? Because that was a, a particular, uh, topic that came up quite a bit with regards to bus stops and.
We are able to, um, request a traffic study of applicants as we see fit. Um, planning, engineering and planning because of, uh, both Leavenworth Road being a state highway and for uh, the type of business, the project, while it will definitely increase traffic, it will not increase, increase the capacity of Leavenworth Road. Uh, it's also just the scale and size of a project where we didn't feel like we needed to make a specific traffic study for it, so.
All right, thank you. Other questions for the director? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to deny due to safety and traffic concerns.
Motion to deny based on, I'm sorry, traffic and safety, excuse me.
Yes, yes.
Traffic and safety design?
Concerns.
Concerns, excuse me. Okay, that motion is made for denial made by Commissioner Polly. Commissioner Jones, are you seconding that motion?
Yes, second.
Okay. Uh, motion for denial has been moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on the motion for denial? Seeing none, roll call.
Armstrong. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Armstrong, was that an I?
I, sorry. Excuse me. Ernst?
I.
Hill?
I.
Jones?
I.
Moller?
I.
Polly?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of this change of zone application. Due to traffic and safety concerns passes six in favor and none opposed.
And thank you. This will be heard once again on August twenty sixth before the board of commissioners, before the board of commissioners at seven PM. Thank you all for your attendance and your comments.
Mr. Chairman, we have two applications we're going to hear together, and then we will vote on them separately. Change of zone application COZ twenty twenty one dash zero two four Ron Woo. Change of zone from R one single family district to R two two family district. Excuse me, for an existing duplex at six oh nine and six eleven South Seventy Fifth Street. The other application is COZ twenty twenty one. Dash zero two five Ron Woo. Changes on from R one single family district to R two two family district for an existing duplex. At six seventeen and six nineteen South Seventy Fifth Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August nine twenty twenty one. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. Infurnance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to these two applications?
No. Yeah, Mr. Woo, get ready to go. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
Sure. Ron Woo, and my address is three zero four Shadow Oaks, Irvine, California. Chairman, staff and planning commission, appreciate your time for hearing my application tonight. My brother and I are under contract to purchase these two duplexes as investment properties. And currently, the zoning of R one is illegal, nonconforming use. When the when the buildings were developed in the nineteen seventies, the zoning at the time. Allowed for duplexes with a single family zoning. And I'm requesting a change of zone to the correct zoning of R two to allow for the duplexes. As they exist today. The request stems from a lender requirement to purchase these properties. They must be a conforming use with the zoning. So I'm requesting the rezone to. Be allowed with the current use. The neighborhood is surrounded by other duplexes. So I feel like this is a valid request. And happy to take any questions other than that.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Saying none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Raise your hand. Saying none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to the staff for his comment. Director Hand.
Mr. Chair, this is going to handle playing urban design. Again, we're hearing both. The duplex at six oh nine, six eleven, as well as six seventeen, six nineteen, I believe it is. They are adjacent to one another. They are on the same block that is all sort of a dead end cul-de-sac block that are all duplexes. Again, these are all legal, nonconforming duplexes in the Riverview District. There is one condition of approval because it was not a redevelopment project and instead, again, legalization of a legal, nonconforming use. Staff is conditioning approval that the that the applicant comes back for a master plan amendment at a later date. We just missed the deadlines when we caught this and Mr. Woo wanted to continue and had a deadline for this closing. So we were able to accommodate them with a change of zone. A request to come back for master plan amendment. Again, that whole block should be. Zoned and land used designated for the use that it currently is. With that, staff recommends approval of both.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on change of zone for six oh nine South Seventy Fifth Street. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve the change of zone staff comments and stipulations.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion on motion for approval on six oh nine South Seventy Fifth Street? Saying none, roll call.
Armstrong?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Hill? Jones?
I.
Muller?
I.
Polly?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of COZ twenty twenty one dash zero two four. Subject to the conditions and the staff report passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Now I'll stand for a motion on six seventeen South Seventy Fifth Street, change of zone.
Motion to approve the change of zone for the case ending in throw two five. Subject to staff comments and stipulations.
Okay, motion approved by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion? Saying none, roll call, please.
Armstrong?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Hill?
I.
Jones?
I.
Muller?
I.
Polly?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of COZ twenty twenty one dash zero two five. Subject to the conditions and the staff report passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again on August twenty fifth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, that takes us to special use permit SP twenty twenty one dash zero two six. Lloyd Clay, special use permit for continuation of the temporary use of land to park salt plow trucks. At seventy eight fifty two Leavenworth Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August nine twenty twenty one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. In furtherance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. At this time, does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I would note that this application was held over from the July twelfth meeting. In order for the applicant to be present tonight.
Okay, so he was, I was going to ask you next. He was not present last month's meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, Mr. Clay, are you in the audience tonight? I do not. Is there anyone representing Mr. Clay here tonight?
Mr. Chair, I believe his son is who lives on the property is is trying to call in right now.
Okay.
Should be the same.
I don't see anybody new popping up.
Would it be okay to move this to the end of the agenda?
Yes, let's go ahead and do that. Janet, will you go ahead and call the next case, please? Yes. Actually, just real quick, is there anyone in the audience? Wait a minute, Mr. Clay just showed up. Okay, Curtis Clay, I've got you queued up to speak. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Curtis Clay. I live at fifty four fifteen Melrose Lane, Shawnee, Kansas.
Okay. Go and tell us about this project.
This is my father's property. I'm sorry, he was not able to be here today. I would like to speak on his behalf. I own a. Salting and plowing business. And during the off season. We have previously stored three trucks on this property. That have. Two of them have salters, two of them have plows. And then the other one is kind of a backup, so we'll put one sulter on it at times. These are all. Standard size, one ton and less pickup trucks. And we are asking permission for one more time to be able to keep the trucks there during the off season. I keep them in my home in Shawnee during the winter season. But I don't want to keep them here all year because they take up my whole driveway. You know, I just have a regular driveway and and. Three trucks. Would take up a lot of room, but I keep them here in the winter time so that they're at my service when I need them ready. And we would like permission. Just for this last year, I will find somewhere else to keep them in the future. But to keep them on the property, again, just, I mean, this year would be until like November. You know, we'd like to keep them there from now until November this year. And then I'll bring them to my house and and use them. In the business.
Okay, and then so after that, then they won't be stored back on the property on Leavenworth Road?
I was told we could not apply for a third special use permit, so if we cannot, then then no, they would not be stored there, you know, unless. We had permission. Yes, I I'm hoping to get out of the business this last year.
Okay. And I just have one final question. Your your last permit expired almost a year ago. Can you just explain the oversight on that?
I cannot. You know, the communication has been given to my dad. He has had Parkinson's for seventeen years now. And so he has a bit of dementia. So, you know, I I rent from him, you know, I I'm I could easily store the truck somewhere else, but I'd like to be able to give my dad some rental income.
Sure.
He's disabled now, and so, you know, there's a lot of oversight on his part because he's just not very good with paperwork.
Okay, all right. Thank you for providing the clarification. Any questions for the applicant? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request tonight? Please raise your hand. Not seeing any, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Han for his comment.
Mr. Chair, this is going to hand director playing urban design. Again, this is a temporary use of land special use permit. Due to the lapse in the general nature that we've been applying to these very specific types of special use permits. We see this one at this special use permit as an opportunity to find a permanent solution as the applicant sort of. Illustrated in his comments. There are a couple of conditions of approval we'd like to go over, but first, again, this is. This is in the kind of north midtown area, if you will, along Leavenworth Road. It's an interesting parcel. It's what we call a flagpole parcel. You have a skinny little flag that goes up to here. It appears as if it would be a commercially zoned property, but it's actually zoned R one, and this is a commercial business and an R one property. So the driveway is essentially here. Through those two buildings and back behind them. Which you can see a little bit better in those in those. Part of our conditions of approval is the maximum of four trucks. In the areas, there appears to be some form of improved surface back there. We asked that the trucks be stored on those improved services. We also have a condition of approval that no repair or washing needs to happen on site. So with those conditions and the others included in the staff report, staff recommends approval for a max of two years. With no chance of being renewed in the future as per the code. Again, this is two years to find a permanent solution, one way or the other for these trucks.
Thank you. Questions for Director Hand? Saying none, we'll stand for a motion.
None.
Sir, a motion? Commissioner Ernst?
I move the Kansas City Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition SP twenty twenty one day zero two six. Subject to staff stipulations.
Thank you. Motion has been made for approval by Commissioner Ernst, seconded by Commissioner Armstrong. Any discussion on the motion for approval for two years? Saying saying none, roll call, please.
Armstrong?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Hill?
I.
Jones?
I.
Muller?
I.
Polly?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty one dash zero two six for two years. Subject to the conditions and the staff report passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, sir, on August twenty sixth at seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, our next application is vacation VAC twenty twenty one dash zero zero nine. Will Anderson with BHC Roads. Vacation of an electrical utility easement at fifty nine seventeen North one hundred and twenty third street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August nine twenty twenty one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. Infurnance of the case and contained in the official file. The notice in the wind on echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this application?
No.
Thank you.
And Mr. Road or Mr. Anderson, excuse me, I've got you queued up, ready to go.
G'day, Will Anderson, BHC. Seven one two State Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, representing the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Davis. We found this. Issue when we were doing a survey of the property, the existing. Easement, electrical easement was the utility itself was outside the easement. Came about. We found out during the survey. We're here to correct it. We work with BPU, Matt Craig at BPU, and of course, the county survey. It would be a two step process. We would create the new easement, which actually covered the actual utility. And then we would vacate the current easement or the existing easement. Once that one was in place, it it can be done roughly at the same time, but functionally one second before the other. If you've got any questions, happy to answer them.
Questions for the applicant? Saying none, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Saying none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Director Han for his comment.
Mr. Chair, this is going to handle playing urban design. Again, this vacation is in the. Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan area. On an existing parcel. Again, there's a swat being out one easement for another, essentially. It looks a little bit like this. And that. And the property is fairly rural. Staff recommends approval with our standard condition for the right to reenter if needed, which we probably won't.
Questions for the director? Saying none, is there a motion? Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve vacation subject staff relations and comments.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hill. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Saying none, roll call, please.
Armstrong?
I.
Ernst?
I.
Hill?
I.
Jones?
I.
Muller?
I.
Polly?
I.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of vacation VAC twenty twenty one dash zero zero nine. Subject to the conditions and the staff report passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, August twenty sixth, seven PM before the Board of County Commissioners.
Chairman, we're down to our last two applications. We are going to hear them together and then vote on them separately. Plan review PR twenty twenty one dash zero one nine Mike Sanders. Preliminary and final plan review for an office warehouse with the initial use being the lay down area. At forty five oh one Douglas Avenue. And plan review PR twenty twenty one dash zero two zero. Mike Sanders preliminary and final plan review for an office warehouse with the initial use being the lay down area. At forty six oh five Shira Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations. The official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated August ninth, twenty twenty one. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant. Inference of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to these cases? No.
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanders, I have you queued up to speak.
Uh, good evening, and I appreciate everyone's time, I hopefully, uh, last but not least, uh. Both of them are very similar in terms of what they are, they're both in the Melrose Business Park. Uh, they sat essentially undeveloped uh for forty or fifty years after the formation of the Melrose Business Park. Uh, both sites uh create significant challenges for developers such as ourselves, grading issues, runoff drainage. Uh, additionally, some of the site issues are very challenging in terms of the rock strata, the Bethany shelf that lays underneath that, which is just a cost in terms of development. Uh, with that, uh, the ultimate plan is for warehouses in that area, we think those are the best uses for that, there is some interest. In talking with the folks at the E D C for that to be the ultimate use in the short run, though, given the cost of development. Uh, we're looking to initially propose these as essentially lay down areas. Which would be a significant step towards their ultimate use as office uh office space, warehouse space. Uh, with that, there there really, I I don't know that there's a lot controversial in here. Uh, we had a neighborhood meeting, uh, very little feedback whatsoever, other than some of the homeless that had camped in some of those areas that have since moved on. A little bit of dumping that's been going on in that area for years, so this development, I think, is going to significantly improve that. Now, we're also going to improve the runoff that's occurring at Stanning Electric uh Progressive, that's already occurred, we've already done some of that. On some of our other development, uh, with that, I I think Mr. Toy's present, there were just three little items in there that we wanted to make sure we understood. Uh, before it went forward, it's really just for our edification, if nothing else. Uh, there's a drive aisle issue when you're doing a lay down, we certainly understand that. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity in working with uh some of the trucking companies or individuals about you the use of millings. We've proposed in in item C four, sheet C four. Uh, a forty foot drive on the Douglas Road property and a one hundred and forty foot drive. Uh, on the Shira Road property, just access from off the road, we think that satisfies. The city's requirements, but we want to make sure on that, that was our 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 subsequent addition. Another item would be our six-foot architectural fence. We found a way to create that out of masonry, that's certainly on there, which we think is is a positive. Uh, the third is uh the retaining wall, I noticed in the documents that were submitted, and this was our fault. Uh, on sheet C two, which was the final plan, it indicated a retaining wall on both properties, you know, given the some of the. You know, some of the layout of those areas, we would want to include that on a final, that same on sheet C four for for our final approval here, but wanted to point that out, I didn't know. If we needed to resubmit that. I I talked to Ms. Parker earlier today about the possibility sending this over to get that done, but I don't I don't think any of that's controversial, I just wanted to make sure I. I we were, you know, following all the steps you wanted us to follow. And that's that's the end of my presentation, unless there are questions.
Questions for the applicant? Okay, saying none, we'll go to the public, I have Charlene Jones who would like to speak, Ms. Jones, I've got you queued up, go and give us your name and address, please.
It's not about his case, uh, she said this is the last case, and I've been sitting here waiting for mine to be called.
What what was your case, ma'am?
S P two oh two one dash zero six one.
What was the name on the case?
Um, Jeffrey Hollins, she had filed it.
Yes, that was on the consent agenda, that was at the very front of the meeting.
I've been sitting here the whole time.
And it was called, it was explained in the uh consent agenda portion of the meeting, and that was passed on, it'll be heard at the Board of Commissioners meeting on August twenty sixth, seven P M.
So I'm expected to show back up again.
Ma'am, the ma'am, the case was called. And if you, I I mean, it was called and it wasn't.
Computer the whole time, I didn't hear you calling, I'm sitting here.
Ma'am, I I run the meeting and I heard it called, so it was called and it will be heard again on August twenty sixth at seven P M. Before the Board of Commissioners, but you will need to pay attention because it will be there, just like it was tonight. Okay, um. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this case? Saying none, we'll go to Director Han for his comments.
Hey, Mr. Chair, this is Gunnar Hand, Director of Planning and Design. I'll take them separately really quick, so forty five oh one, I'm gonna go back to the map. Forty five oh one is right here at Douglas and Forty Fifth, the other one is offshore road, you can see the parcel basically right here. Now, this parcel right here is zoned R one, but everything else around it is zoned into. Or M P two. For that reason, I think this one is a relatively straightforward, the applicant had mentioned a specific question about. Um, the drive aisles for the lay down yard, and this does not comply with what is required. This is, this implies that you're basically going to store something, big huge plates of something on the rest of it, the assumption is you drive in. And you drive down and you place it in some storage area or some allotted storage area, so we don't see this as an act as a. As a um drawing that meets the code to show us the drive aisles. Um, essentially, they've requested to do millions everywhere, and we have never done that, we do not do that, we require drive aisles to be asphalt or concrete.
And we're we're absolutely fine with it, we we've reached out several times, an email as well as by phone. Just to try and get an answer from the city is what was required, and so I and and I think the one you're showing. I believe that's the lot off of Douglas uh or or forty. Yeah, back to the share, yeah, we're we're comfortable with whatever you want, I mean, we we just want to know what we're doing, so it's all consistent. Uh, what you're saying makes sense, and so if we're going to use that as lay down, it would go more towards, it would be essentially a line. That would go more towards the back of the property, we just, we just hadn't gotten a direct answer. And so if that's what it is, we're happy to do it, I mean, it's uh two inches asphalt over the top, we haven't requested a variance from that at all. We just didn't get any clear direction, we just didn't know.
Okay, Mr. Sanders, I'm gonna have to ask you to work this stuff out with staff after the meeting, we're 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 under his comments and. It's been a long night, and I can't have you getting explanations on stuff that you should have gotten before tonight's meeting. Okay? And I and I'm sorry to cut you off, but we got to get on with tonight. Gunnar, can you finish up?
Sure. Um, and again, with that, I think that we're essentially prepping for development, so with this one, we asked for a little bit of landscaping on the on the section that addresses R one. Um, but with that, we recommend approval with the conditions.
Are you recommending approval for both cases?
Recommend approval for both cases, the other case is a little different. Um, in that it is tucked up. Right next to um single family development, and it's a sort of, there is a, there is an elevation change. The only difference between this, the conditions here and the conditions here is that we specifically asked for the um. The retaining wall, if one is being built eventually on the site. As well as all of the landscaping and buffering, so on this site, we've asked for um. A landscape buffer and a and a fence on the west and south property line. With additional landscaping, if a retaining wall is to be built for that final office warehouse, we ask that that be built. As well as all those other public improvements, including, I believe, some street trees on Shira Road. Um, be built for the lay down yard, so that the final, when the project comes in, it'll have, it can go through another final development plan. For the office and warehouse in the future, um, but all of those public improvements would be there from the get go. To screen um the industrial use from the residential properties around it.
Okay. I I apologize to the applicant, but I I just, it's it's too late in this hour to be getting clarifications back and forth between the staff that could be done uh tomorrow. Questions for the director? Saying none, I'll stand for motion, we'll take each case separately, this will be on forty five oh one Douglas Avenue. Commissioner Ernst.
I move the Kansas City, Kansas City Planning Commission recommend approval of petition P R twenty twenty one day zero one nine. Subject to staff stipulations.
Thank you, we're giving you a workout tonight. And uh, we got a second by Commissioner Armstrong, the motion was made for approval by Commissioner Ernst, any discussion on that motion for approval? Saying none, roll call.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Ernst.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Polly.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of P R twenty twenty one dash zero one nine. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, and we have one last, one forty six oh five Shira Road, is there a motion?
I'd move to approve subject to staff uh stip, comments and stipulations.
Okay, motion to approve made by Commissioner Armstrong, and is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
It is indeed.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion on motion for approval? Commissioner Ernst?
No.
Okay, sorry, maybe I didn't get your hand down. Okay, uh, any discussions, seeing none, roll call please.
Armstrong.
Hi.
Ernst.
Hi.
Hill.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Polly.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that muster recommend approval of P R twenty twenty one dash zero two zero. Subject to the conditions in the staff report passes six in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, this will be heard once again on August twenty sixth at seven P M before the Board of Commissioners on both these cases, thank you. And then we have one, yes, ma'am.
The last item that I added was the.
Thank you.
Planning Commission voting procedures.
Yes.
We discussed in June and July.
And who's going to handle this? Gunnar or Daniel? Nope. Anyone? So with the way we left, it was uh, well, I I'm sorry, refresh my memory, were we going to look at taking a vote to change it?
Um, I believe, Mr. Chairman, that you said, well, Patrick had me send out information.
Correct.
And I sent that to the commission, and I believe that you said that we were going to dispose of this item. Uh, one way or another, this evening.
Okay, so what is your pleasure with, I know we're missing some people tonight, but what is your pleasure with regard to the way that we vote? I know when we spoke about it before, uh, it's always been alphabetical, it's done, excuse me, just provide me the clarification, it is done alphabetically. Or is it done by district at the Board of Commissioners level, I'm sorry, I've forgotten.
I think it's done by district, and then the person at the top of the chart goes to the bottom. And so, you know.
It's rotated, correct?
Right.
On on each case, I mean, on each vote as it go goes on throughout the meeting.
Just.
For that.
It changes with the meeting.
Changes with the meeting, what is your pleasure on the 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 vote, the way we're voting? Pros, cons with the way we're doing it, Commissioner Jones? I'm sorry, you're muted.
Is that a question for Janet, to just ask?
No, I'm asking you all, how 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 do you want to handle voting going forward, it's been brought up, we've kind of kicked it around, and so we've we've heard from legal counsel, we've heard from staff. How do you want to to vote going forward?
I had indicated previously, I, you know, I was certainly willing to be flexible, I thought we were gonna hear something further on the amount of. Time, additional workload that that was going to put on Janet is what I recall hearing, and I don't know that we closed that loop on that.
Well, I think we can close that right now, but what we got from Patrick. Um, let me go back and get the email. Patrick gave the rationale and um. Voting rotation, let's see. So the voting rotation of the commission, the vector effective January first, the sequence of voting by the unified. Commission, all regular and special sessions shall be conducted in numerical order of district positions, followed by a numerical sequence of that large districts. With the mayor voting, if necessary or otherwise, oh, excuse me, if necessary or otherwise. Authorized thereafter, on the first day of each calendar month thereafter, at any regular commission. Special session of the unified commission, the sequence of voting shall be changed, so that the commissioner voting first during the previous month. Shall vote last, and each commissioner shall move forward by one position in voting sequence, so that every ten months. Each commissioner shall be required to vote first one time and shall vote in each and every other position in the voting sequence. One time, the mayor or mayor pro tem, when providing or when presiding, shall always vote last. So in our case, we vote alphabetically, so if we were to to assume the same type of procedure, we would. And then if people are absent, how do you want to handle if they're absent? At a meeting, do they automatically still move up, does the alphabetic order change, how do you want that handled?
We could simply just move, you know, alphabetically one down the line and rotate that way and keep it very simple, I had.
Regardless of absenteeism or anything like that, to keep it from being complicated. So Armstrong would vote first this month, and the next month it would be Ernst, looking.
However, however.
And just, excuse me, yeah, who who would be next?
Rotation, if somebody misses their time, they miss their time.
And if Connolly's not here, then we move on to Ernst.
Correct.
Janet, and then as far as you're concerned with regard to uh things that you have to do. You want, any comment or?
No, I will do whatever you want me to do. Now, it might push me to retirement a little bit quicker, but no.
Okay, I want I want to kind of put this issue to rest, so we're not continuing to talk about it, so. Uh, Mr. Muller, is that a, are you making a motion to do it that way, or is that just a comment?
Whatever's simple, I just thought maybe this might be more equitable.
Okay, so Commissioner Muller is making a motion that we go alphabetical, and then each month, the person at first drops to the end? Yes, would then in turn drop to the end, and the next person would move up.
Correct.
Is there a second to doing that?
Second, oh, okay, I was second.
Seconded by Polly, discussion.
Yes.
On doing it that way. This is, and question for Daniel, this doesn't require us to, we don't need anybody's approval, do we have to have the Board of Commissioners blessing on this?
No, no, you do not need the. Board of Commissioners approval for uh your voting procedure.
Okay.
Any other. Ordinance that dictates how you vote.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay?
Okay, this is everyone, so um. So what that would mean, I'm just trying to get understanding, you know, since I'm I'm the senior member. Uh, the uh voting would be, say, we get to. Uh, with like tonight, we started every voting opportunity with Armstrong, so. Then that would go, she would go down to the bottom and it'd eventually be, he'll would be the first one, oh, correct?
Correct, so next month, if we if we go with alphabetical, Commissioner Connolly would start the voting, and then the following month, it would be Commissioner Ernst. I'm just going off memory, I don't have my lister in front of me, and we would just work our way down, and everybody would just cycle to the bottom and move their way right back up.
Okay.
Okay? Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Janet, do you want to call the uh call roll call and any or any?
Can I call it any?
Any way you want to do it.
Okay, Armstrong.
Hi.
Ernst.
No.
Hill.
No.
Uh, Jones.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Polly.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that vote is four in favor and two opposed. So it does pass, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, so here's the thing, we're not going to tell Connolly and Miller and everybody, we're just going to surprise them next month.
And now you know they're going to read their minutes.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so, all right, any further business to come before the order? Thank you all for your patience tonight, thank you for your understanding of my little uh outbursts. Uh, I'm just getting a little tired, so anyway, we'll see you all next month, thank you all for everything you do, appreciate it.
Thanks to Dr. Hale, I hope she enjoys.